Good evening and welcome to the 30th meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the board and our staff. Jim, if you'd like to start?
Jim Davis, member.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Tagaya, secretary.
And Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
And myself, Meredith Paul, serving as chair. And now tonight with us, we have Tim. If you'd like to introduce yourself?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Julia?
Julia Getman, clerk.
Great, thank you all. We can begin with our first administrative items approval of the minutes. Cheryl has sent out today, I don't know if folks had a chance to review it yet, for March 14th. Folks had a chance to review those not yet?
I have not.
Okay. So why don't we defer the March 14th minutes? And Julia, I know we had the executive session, but was there one other that we needed to approve?
The 28th of March.
The 28th? Is it the 20th or the 26th? Oh, I'm sorry, the 28th of March?
26th was the executive session.
That was the executive session, okay. So has everyone had a chance to review the March 26th minutes?
I mean, the 28th and the 28th, no, I have not.
28th, I keep saying 28th.
I have not.
I have, I'm okay with the 14th and the 28th, but yeah. But if you guys haven't.
Cheryl needed to look at those, so, okay. Why don't we just plan to defer the March 14th and the 28th to our May 9th meeting? I can have a motion to defer the minutes?
Make a motion to defer the minutes to May 9th?
Great, second?
Second.
Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie? We lost Maggie.
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry, hi. And myself, yes, great, thank you.
I'm sorry, or May 8th? I have on my calendar, May 8th for some reason. For Wednesday, did we, did we, am I confused there, planning board?
I think we might have talked about May 8th, because that would be the second week of the month, but also it's the first week of town meeting, so town meeting would be the 6th, 7th, and 9th.
That's right, yeah. Do we have confirmation?
Yeah, wasn't there a conflict on the 9th at the high school, so isn't it town meeting scheduled for 6th, 7th, and 8th?
You may very well be right. Let me, I'm gonna shoot a text to the, Cheryl's got some documentation, like.
Yeah, I have the warrant. And it does say the 7th and 8th, the 13th, 14th, and 15th, and of course, the 6th is the start.
Okay, so then we're in the clear for the 9th.
Perfect, that's great.
Okay, Lynn booked a room, just in case you guys want to meet before town meeting, so if you want to meet, just let me know.
Great, thank you, Julia.
Yeah, that may be something. Because I know the Select Board is doing their annual kind of reorganization meeting right after the swearing in next week. So potentially, we could have the same crew as today, potentially a new member. There's no, I don't think that there's any planning board business at town meeting. But that may be an opportunity to, you know, just do the annual reorganization, you know, in advance of the 9th, or you can meet at the 9th. I think it's probably less pressing, because there are no planning board articles at town meetings, so. But, you know, you can, you can all think about that if you want.
Okay. Maybe a half an hour before. Okay, great, thank you, nice to know we have that room held. The next item, Tim, your update.
That was basically, that was basically it, I just wanted to make sure we were all ready for, for town meeting, if you all wanted to decide to meet. Nothing, nothing, I don't want to say there's nothing going on, there's a ton going on, but nothing that you don't already know about, so we can kind of move on.
Okay, perfect, thank you. At this time, we can now open it up to citizens speak. If there's anyone who, from the public who would like to join us, please raise your hand and we can bring you in. Comments? Tim, do you see anyone?
We had a hand and then, okay, we've got Frank Donovan. Frank, if you want to give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, hi, Frank Donovan, 16 Spafford Road.
Welcome, Frank.
Hi, everyone. Just if the vote is coming down tonight for the Highland Street property, I want to address this to Jim. Jim, as I understand it, you have family members in a facility of Northbridge, is that correct?
Yes.
So I see that as the conflict, and I don't know how you've been looking at this. And I would think because of that, you should recuse yourself from voting. If they are voting tonight or whenever they do vote. So I wanted to put that out there.
Okay, I don't see it as a conflict personally, but unless the board feels otherwise.
I mean, how would you not, I guess, I feel like you'd definitely be influenced by that.
Because my father isn't in a memory clinic?
Well, one of these ones that's coming before us, it's not just any memory clinic.
Jim, I don't think we need to get into a back and forth here at citizens.
Okay, so I didn't mean to get like that, I just.
No, no, no. We can, we can talk to town council and we can, you know, direct Jim to the State Ethics Commission for advice on that. So we don't need to go back and forth on this right now.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. Any other hands up? Tim, anyone else? And there will be an opportunity to, of course, speak during the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry, we, I don't see any other hands.
Okay. Great, thank you. So at this time, we can now begin to reopen our public hearing for 111 Highland Street, special permit continued from April 16th. And welcome our team in. Was Ned able to get in now?
Give me half a second to, if folks that are, that are on the Northbridge team could raise their hands, just so you're at the top of the, the list.
Have been making it in.
Right.
And thank you for the record, Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Northbridge Communities LLC, the applicant in this case. I thought maybe what we'd do is present some new information or materials that we had submitted over the last week since the last hearing. Done a lot to focus on key outstanding issues with the board and, and then hopefully turn to the, a new draft of the special permit, which I've just submitted five minutes ago with most up-to-date proposals for terms and conditions of the permit. I think the most significant change that we have proposed is that we are proposing to change out the Ready Rock retaining wall, walls to a Caniglia Arrow block, which is a Framingham manufacturer that manufactures precast concrete block with stone veneer. Last Friday, I delivered in pieces of stone that would be precast, cast into the precast that would be available. We would propose to use the veneer block for the entry, for the drive all the way into the turnaround in front of the main entry and down to the left to the loading dock, so that the, all of the visible wall from outside of the property would be this stone veneer. It changes the way the top of the wall would be operated, there wouldn't be, there would be a fence and wooden guardrail on each side of the roadway. And I can present, have, I think Rebecca Dillon present a, an image of what that, with the front entry would now look like with that change. And Rebecca, do you have the ability to do that?
I do.
You should be able to share screen.
There, can everyone see that?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Sashi, did you want to go over this?
Sure. So, big difference with this wall is that it's, now the top of the wall along the entrance drive will be flush. So really, as you go up the wall, you'll see, or up the driveway, you'll see very little wall on your left, right? There's guardrail now on both sides, as well as a ornamental fence. The fence will tie right into the pillars that mark the driveway entrance, along with the cobblestone strip. And then the walls will continue out just around the radius of the entrance drive. So, you know, it really ties in nicely, the wall will still step as you go up the entrance drive, but again, it, it will be not as, not nearly as visible as it was with the previous material that we were using. The stone is really nice, we've selected, I know you've seen samples of it, but what's shown in this rendering is pretty close actually to what the color pattern would be. And this will also be similarly used on some of the building materials. So, feel like it is a really nice element and it will highlight this entrance quite well. So visually, looking from the road, as you go down the road towards the Bacardi property, and if you look right into this area, you know, if you have views through the trees, through the vegetation that are open, you would see the stone wall and then the building above it, so. Yeah, that's about it.
Questions from the board on this design?
Is it only about the stone wall, or is it about? Also, my question is about the guardrail. How come that guardrail is necessary when you have a nicer black fence? I feel like this is a driveway and the guardrail makes it more industrial looking. And it seems a little odd to have sort of a double fence. And that's one, and number two, what's the spacing between the guardrail posts?
I don't, I don't know if that's been.
I can get the answer to that off the detail in a second, it's on the drawings. But, you know, the guardrail we need for safety purposes, we had a parapet before and taking the parapet out, we just felt that the additional barrier, you know, the condition was raised last meeting about, you know, neighborhood kids who are on bikes or something like that, so we just added the fence. We have to have it on the sidewalk side by code, we've added it on to the non-sidewalk side, just as an additional safety measure.
And my question about the spacing on the posts was, I think the setback for the, the building was in the special permit, it said it was 139 feet setback from the road. And so I'm thinking that 139 is possibly from the closest part of the building, which is the loading dock area. But, but then I thought, I saw, we talked about that the setback from the main, main building was 150 feet. So I just wanted to understand the, this rendering as to, I feel like this rendering makes the driveway look much longer than it actually is, because 150 feet is not that significant. Like from the street that my business is off, my driveway is about 300 feet. So I'm just kind of wondering if this isn't kind of an accurate depiction.
Yeah. I believe the, the distance along the driveway is closer to 200 to 230 feet.
The driveway distance is more than that, okay? If you, and I'm excluding traveling around the roundabout, but if you just basically drove up the driveway from Highland Street, and then at the traffic circle, you went straight to the front door, that distance is about 320 feet.
Thank you.
Okay?
And you're right, the, the closest point of the building to Highland Street, which is actually not at the loading dock, but closer, that corner is, it's 135 feet to the edge of Highland Street, that's the setback.
Okay.
So I agree with Maggie, I think the reason why we had requested the guardrail was because there was just a stone, there was a stone wall there, a low stone wall, and we were, we were concerned about that. I guess, I'm not sure why you took the stone wall out now, but now that you have the fence in its place, it does, it's, it looks sort of silly to have double fencing.
Well, we took out the stone wall because it's a different wall system. Completely.
You can't have, you still can't have a low stone wall?
Well.
It is a, it is a, it is a retaining wall that is a different material than what was originally proposed as Ready Rock.
It's, it's not a block wall anymore, so the parapet doesn't make sense. It's a completely different system.
Okay.
Yeah, we had massive blocks before that would serve as a guardrail barrier, that is not the case with the system, so we have to put the guardrail in.
So you have here, these serve two different purposes. I understand from the code point of view, like the vehicle is for the guardrail, so that's the closest to the street. And then the fencing is a fall protection because of the drop that you have from the top here down to the grade down below. And the, typically, the fencing for fall protection isn't of the same strength to protect against a vehicle, so that's why there's both. And I believe that was the case at Woolcut Woods as well.
Yeah, I don't remember it up there, I just drove up there the other day and I don't remember it. And just as a side note, I drove also by Goddard School, and it seems like they have since put in a second fence. So it kind of looks a little silly having these two fences, so.
So the guard, the guardrail, we need both fences on the sidewalk side by code, we have to have them. And we always did. On the non-sidewalk side, we absolutely have to have the guardrail. The site fence, it is my understanding that's not necessarily required by code, but we felt it was a good idea. And further, it was raised as a safety concern comment during the last meeting, so we put it in.
Yeah, which I understand.
Yeah, I think, you know, I was, Paul, this is Sean, I was the one that initiated probably everything that you're talking about in this particular, on that particular side of the road. And, and, you know, the concern that I had expressed last week is, there was, there was no guardrail, there was no black metal fence, and if kids happen to be riding up there, my recollection is that the, the retaining wall extended only a short dimension above grade. So, you know, the attention you're giving to that is a result of the questions that I was asking and the concern I was expressing for the safety of somebody that might be on that side of the road. And more than likely, you know, kids exploring, you know, wandering onto the site. So Maggie, that's, this is, this is a result of some of the questions that I brought up. And I definitely understand, you know, the, the difference between the performance of a guardrail and the performance of that metal fence. The metal fence will never perform to meet the requirements to withstand, you know, vehicular traffic. But like, one question I have, and it might be helpful for us to see, last week, there was a section, Paul, that you had, that showed us a section, a cut through the roadway, that showed us how the, the stone wall, or how the retaining wall was, was, would be assembled. Do you have something similar to show us, so we can understand what you mean in regards?
I was in the updated drawings that you should have received, but if you give me half a second here, I can share screen and call it.
Before, before you switch images, I just want to point out that this light fixture is a change as well. The prior fixture had an, kind of an arm on it, more like a streetlight, I mean, this is a streetlight too, but it's of a more vertical style that we talked about last week.
We provided a touch with respect to that.
So I can share screen, but, you know.
Rebecca has to stop sharing, so that you can share.
Okay, if the board doesn't want the guardrail on the other side, I don't think we're required to have, if it's not required by code, then we can take it out.
Guardrail or fence?
The fence, we have to have the guardrail, if I said, if I said guardrail, that was incorrect, they mean the fence. Okay, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, this is the updated section. These walls are a, they're not, they're heavy, they're more like a Versalock wall, it's a different type of block system. There's no batter, these ones stack vertically, the other ones, you know, tapered, so it was like a 12 to one kind of net tilt back, you know, as each one nested back slightly further than the one before it. So, you know, this is now looking towards Highland Street, you know, the, the detail on the left is pretty much what we always had, we have the, you know, five-foot concrete walk that is exclusive of the width of the curb, which we allowed six inches for. And then we got the guardrail and the light poles falling between the guardrail posts, which by the way, are 6'6" on center. Let's say fencing on the wall, and then the other side, you know, we need, looking at it on the right side, we need the two-foot setback from face of curb to face of guardrail, we allowed a foot width for the guardrail, and then the base of the guardrail needs to be a foot and a half back from the back of the wall. And the walls are two feet thick, and you add it all up, then we have a 38 and a half foot wide cross-section here, you know, with the site fence fitting in between the guardrail and the top of the wall. All flush, you know, there might be some, well, it, it, it's graphically and it's nominally flush, but, but the blocks are blocks, and so that what will happen is, is there will, they're about two feet tall, so that there will be a variable reveal as it steps up or down, depending on which way you're going. That, you know, the reveal would be next to zero and then up to about two feet. If you follow me?
Well, on the right-hand side, as we look at this section, what is the, what is the grade surface where the guardrail is on the right-hand side?
Well, it varies, sloping uphill, but what is the surface? That would just be, yeah, that would just be loam and seed grass.
It's grass, yeah, okay.
And does that grass grow right over the block? Or do you cap the, the?
This is, the grass stalks short of the block, and it's, again, the block will stick up somewhat, just because it's blocks. So if you can't, you can't construct it flush, it's like it'll step. You know, as it goes up, and you, once you get up to the top of the block, then you have to, on the next block, you add it, of course, to the top of it.
If we propose a color for the the guardrail?
Guardrails, well, it's just timber at the moment, we haven't talked about a color for it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Paul, getting back to the top of the block, is there a cap on it, or is it, because I was standing on one today at the Northwood Airport, that.
Yeah, there would probably be a cap on it, I mean, we're not showing that on the detail here, we just, you know, usually typically there is, there's a capstone that goes on it.
Yeah, the one that I was standing on today, and I don't want to go backwards with this comment, but I'm gonna say it, it looked a lot like a ready rock, not that I want a ready rock, but it looked like that. But the top course was actually grass to the end of the block, so when I was standing, looking at the airport, I was actually standing on the top of the Ready Rock block wall, and it was grass all the way to the tip, and I was just wondering, it was just really neat to the block, the top course of block had a little lip, and it was probably four inches of loam and, and grass that went right to the edge.
Yeah, that's what we, that's what we have, you're talking about this detail here that we still have, because we still got the Ready Rock, this probably, this is what you're looking at here.
Yeah, hold on a sec.
Here, we kept the loam, it just goes to a lip.
Beautiful, that's gonna be on both sides?
No, no, because we still have the parapet here, this is, this is the back entrance here, going back to the rear parking lot. So this one, we kept the parapet for, you know, a number of reasons, mostly to keep this wall section down in the crossing, because, you know, the way this lines up, that if we added, you know, a foot or so of width to this thing, to put a guardrail in there, that the amount of wetlands impacts would be more than what I would call de minimis, so, that's, that's what we did. I don't know if we've got photos, we can, you know, again, stop sharing my screen here, I can look, I suspect that if you look at the photos of the Caniglia Arrow block wall systems, that most of them include a cap. I know Versalock and those, there's always a capstone that goes on this thing, I'd be surprised if they didn't have one.
Okay.
Okay, I haven't looked at it, we're not showing it in the detail, but that's typically how they're done.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Paul, on that section, one last comment, it's just a small comment, though, that the, the grass probably should stop before you get to that metal fence, because you'll never be able to attend to, you know, caring for it on the other side, see that little space. You know, somehow that detail ultimately, when you're building, will probably get worked out to not be like that, is my thinking, you know? Whoever's, you know, it's a minor issue.
Okay. I mean, you know, the, the scent, this, this site fence that you're seeing here, if not required by code, we can take it out, which would help with that, you'd be able to, you know, reach through the thing with a weed whacker or something like that, maintain it.
Yeah.
Not on the site fence, you couldn't.
But if, 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 for some reason, you know, a young kid went over that guardrail, that's a pretty significant drop on the other side, right?
That's why we put it in, that's why I put the site fence in.
Yeah, I'm not gonna encourage getting rid of that fence.
Okay.
How tall is that fence, Paul, on that side?
Sashi, what did we have?
Forty, 42 inches.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have 42 inches as measured from the grounds, 42 inches from the ground surface.
And what is the material of the site fence?
It's like, we're calling for like, you know, the black square closed aluminum fences.
Yep.
I've got pictures of a similar, of a project where we basically went with this detail, I mean, the wall system is different. You know, if you want to come back, I can call up some pictures of that and share them, you know, kind of, I mean, it's a different wall system, that won't be Versalock, but, you know, how.
Because the windows are recessed in, we're going to have to case them out with either PVC or another product like that. They won't be able to come integral.
Yeah, that's fine. As long as you just show us a sample of that trim so we can hold it up against the platform, you see what they both, that's all I'm asking for.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, well, um, the, uh, the, there is a provision, a new provision in the draft of the special permit that reflects the, the obligation to come back to the planning board for review and approval for aesthetic purposes.
Great.
That's great. So you'll, you'll provide both a shingle and a clavoured, um, option that we can look at and, and and, uh, some color options as well?
I think yes.
Okay. That would be great.
Right now, the, right now, the building is just shown with all clapboards. Are you talking the roof shingles?
No, I seen, um, just like the vinyl, you had given some samples of a style of, uh, shingle style. Um, we just approved a building recently with hardy plank, um, shingle style. And that can also be quite nice. I just thought it would be nice just to see the different options.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right. Other questions about the window and the window details and the siding?
Just thank you for, uh, preparing this drawing. I think it's helpful and it'll be helpful for the record. So thank you, Rebecca.
Sure, you're welcome.
There's one other significant thing that we took a look at. I know that Sean had asked us to look at, and that was whether or not we could go with porous pavement in the rear parking area. Took a pretty close look at it. Um, Paul can jump in for me as well, but there are two significant issues why we would not be able to provide porous pavement. The first is that the parking areas have to be developed initially with a binder pavement because that's going to be the lay down area for all of the construction equipment. Um, and that has to be, there can't be any possibility that oils and other fluids would come off of the, um, the equipment and into the ground. Um, so that's important and we'd have to remove that obviously and replace it. The other thing about porous pavement, it is a, it is a, uh, a stormwater measure. And we would have to bring in a significant amount of fill in order to achieve separation between the bottom of the pavement and seasonal high groundwater. Uh, you know, there's a four foot separation that's generally required under stormwater standards. That would be an enormous amount of fill, uh, additional fill coming to the site. And I think that the, the impact of that is far outweighs the, the benefit that would come from, uh, the porous pavement. So for those two reasons, we really took a look, you know, having looked at it, we don't think it's really appropriate in this case. With that, those are the major uh, modifications. Obviously the transfer over to this coniglio block with the, with the, uh, with the stone veneer is a fairly significant, uh, change, uh, really from a, from a, from a structural perspective, but more in an aesthetic perspective. Because what you'll now be looking at will look more like the stone bridge, uh, the bridge over that carries the stone bridge lane uh, over that is a, looks like a very similar type of, uh, look to what's being proposed here. With that, I'm happy to pause for questions and we can move into the, or comments from others, um, but we can move into the the significant other, uh, issues that we've addressed in the draft of the special permit, um, and that we, we, we obviously prepared to walk through.
Great. How would members, would members like to, um, have any questions that they would like to ask before we walk through the special permit? Or do you want to have, save your comments, um, as we get to that aspect of the permit?
Meredith, I'll, I'll, uh, look to you for guidance. Um, two topics I want to address and we'll, I'll address them whenever you say is appropriate. One is, um, hospital business traffic. This is a topic I've spoke of in the past. And the other is, um, some, uh, measure of water mitigation for the residents. So when, whenever those were appropriate to discuss, happy to discuss them. I'll, I'll wait for you to, um, signal.
Okay. All right. That's great. I'll take a note of that. All right. Why don't we, why don't we start walking through where we are on the permit? And I'm sure questions will arise as we get to certain sections. So walking through page one, was there any, did anyone have any questions?
If I think it would, maybe it's helpful if Tim could share a screen and
That would be great, us particularly since you have some, yeah, added revisions. That would be great.
I'll, uh, I'll bring that up momentarily.
And I attempt to address two of, the, the two issues that Sean raised, um, in the body of that, of the special permit, but obviously wouldn't look to look at it carefully.
Okay. Great. All right. Any questions, uh, from the board on page one or any comments? I don't think there were any changes to that first page.
The only change to the first page is we added some revision dates to the
Okay.
Plans. Is this the one I just sent over to you, Tim?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so I added some revision dates. Is this a separate question whether you would want a conformed set of plans with a, uh, final date or whether you're happy with plans dated April 2, revised as, uh, as specifically indicated.
I prefer to have a set of conformed plans. Just, I think it's easier for all parties down the road.
Right. And I had asked him, I, I just had a question. Um, I believe Sean Riordan was given, um, the updated, the, um, the revised April 19th site layout plan, grading and drainage plan. Um, I think there were a few other site details, um, just a few things that were revised on April 19th. But we have not, um, we, we, do we know if Sean has reviewed those or if he had any comments on those, Tim?
I believe Sean is here with us. Um, so Sean, if you want
And I'm not even sure exactly what those revisions were. I just thought it would be good for him to sign off on those.
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. Um, I did look at all the revised plans. You know, I obviously didn't, um, sort of, they were all, all modest changes. I didn't, I didn't sort of scrub through the entire submittal, but you know, I, I did get a, a healthy look at everything that I'd been spitting. And didn't, didn't generate any new comments for me.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. So moving to, um, the second page, Tim, if you can scroll down. There was a highlighted section here. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to see that.
Here.
Public.
I still see that just before the highlight begins, that the default is uh, considered a minor change. And there's no sort of verbiage as to what constitutes a significant change. At the last meeting, I suggested that it come back to us in the event of any change and that the board be asked to decide whether the board considers it minor or significant. So Ned, uh, can you explain your thoughts on this?
Um, I drew a blank on that one, I think.
Okay.
Didn't, I didn't intentionally not address it. I just
Okay.
As I was looking at all the other things that I was addressing, I think I missed that one.
Okay, I just, um,
I don't have any, I don't have any issue with the board determining whether or not.
Okay. I think that's, um, a change I would like to see.
How do you want to, do you want to phrase that?
Okay, let's see.
Then you could put period after a final site plan. And then you could say a copy of which shall be provided to the board to be reviewed as to whether the board considers it a minor or significant change.
I would, I would put a semicolon on a period.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's just cleaner and
Great. Thank you. Do we need the rest of that though? We go back.
Um, I think, let, let me change substantial to significant so it matches.
Okay.
I mean, I think the distinction here is if it's a minor change, you just approve it. And then if it's a significant change, um, then the review's a little bit more.
Okay, great.
Let me use, uh, saving this as a new version.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm putting it on my machine. Sorry, gang.
No, take your time to answer. That's great. That's
And keep going.
Yep. I think that's good for page two. Those all seem to stay the same. Yep.
This is where I dealt with, um, exterior siding and trim. Windows. I don't know what the recess. Whether it was two inches or three inches, I, why, there's a blank. And then we would provide a sample and a specification sheet for the, for the cement that would be available. Um, for to the director of planning and the parent shall be approved by the planning board. And then, um, I added language that Cheryl suggested about the solar readiness, uh, for the roof, uh, with the definition therein.
The one thing I would say is if you want flexibility in the material of the windows, this would be a question for Rebecca. I don't think you'd have to include vinyl here. And I think, uh, again, Rebecca, was it three inches that it was set back or three and a half inches from the exterior face?
It was, yep, three inches. And I, I agree, that makes sense to
I, I, yeah.
Pick out the vinyl.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you know what the window you used up on Newburyport?
I think it's gelled one.
Yeah, that's a good, good name.
Do, do we, do we want to put three inches here?
Yes.
And then will we be able to take a look at like the, the, um, grill pattern on the windows to see if there's simulated divided light or just like a grill in between the glass?
I think that was in that drawing that they had.
It wasn't. I mean, I, I, I assume from the first drawing, it was between the glass. From the second drawing, it looked like it was a simulated divided light, but it didn't specify it anywhere.
Yes, we didn't, we didn't specify it, but we can, when we come back with the, um, all of the exterior finishes, we can also
Get a window sample?
Yeah.
That would be great to get a window sample.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We want to add, um, uh, siding after the word siding. Um, and try and put siding, trim and window, uh, samples will be made available to the director of planning.
That would be great.
Right below the number three, Tim.
Okay.
Siding comma. Trim and window.
A sample and specification sheet for the fiber cement siding, trim and windows. That'll be made available to the director of planning.
Yeah. And Tim will let us know when it's in, right?
Uh, you'll, you'll be the second to know after, after, after me.
The Goddard School. We don't, yeah.
Yeah, Meredith, you don't have to keep reminding me.
So Meredith, I have a question on this, and I guess I like Cheryl's inputs and she's, uh, an architect. Does this preclude, uh, the use of a, um, uh, a trim material that's PVC? It, it's, it seems to me it's really common to have PVC trim and a, uh, cementitious siding material.
That's a good catch, Sean.
Uh, and you know, I, um, I honestly don't know. And Jim, you might, you might see some of this, but I don't see that. I don't see trim material as being cementitious.
There's a product by Boral. Um, but I don't think we have to hold to that as the trim material here. Um, either, so
First sentence, we just take out exterior siding shall be, shall consist of.
Yeah, that's fine.
So take out and trim.
Yes, exactly. I mean, cause you can do way more with the AZEC or PVC trim as far as cornices and backbands and things that you can't do with that Boral.
Well, and I think you could make the, the word materials just material now. But that's a minor thing.
Our preference would be to use PVC, but, um, if you keep it general, then we can look at options.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a better looking building if you have the latitude to use PVC trim.
I think in, in the event that could be changed to should. So after solar ready.
Wait, where are we? Oh, shh. The roof will be constructed in such a manner as to be solely ready, should
Actually, well, maybe it shouldn't be just the roof. Because there's reference here to other things than just the roof. So maybe it should be the, the building will be constructed in such a manner to, as to be solar ready should the opportunity to install solar panels present itself in the future.
I totally agree with you, Cheryl. That's, that's a, that's a better way to capture this.
Buildings should be capitalized.
Okay.
Wait, so if you stop for a minute, if you go back to number six, so under site plan design, there's a statement that says the site layout takes into account the existing terrain and significant lamp, landscape features. Is that an accurate statement?
Absolutely.
Because by bringing in 20,000 cubic yards of fill doesn't mean you're using the existing terrain.
It means we're preserving the existing terrain to the extent possible by bringing in fill with retaining walls and narrowing the area that is actually subject to development.
So to your point though, Maggie, it, it could say, um, to the extent possible. Um, or something like that at the end. Or to the extent feasible.
Yeah, and in following the use of cut, cuts and fills have been minimized to the, to that necessary to fit the building into the terrain. You know, it's just going back, you know, has, has it really been minimized? Has cut and fill really been minimized? That, you know, it goes back to, it's just a lot of cut and filling going on and it's disrupting the natural topography. It's just making sure the statements are accurate.
So again, to the second sentence, I think you're referring to, and you, you could add, um, and to be in compliance with stormwater standards. I think it's really what's triggering or stormwater and zoning, stormwater standards and zoning requirements, because it's the height at the abutting property, um, to the south that triggers some of it. And it's the, uh, stormwater requirements that, that are triggering other parts of it. So if you want to be more specific to that, I think I, I, I agree with you. So it would be after the abutting properties words.
I'd recommend the term wetland protection.
Okay, sure.
Stormwater standards.
Okay.
Stand, stormwater standards are part of wetlands protection.
What do you, what do you, what do I, what do you want me to write here? After abutting properties?
And conform to what did you say Ned again? Wetlands?
Um, provide wetland protection and con, conform to zoning requirements and provide wetland, maximize provision of wetland protections.
You could say in order to instead of and.
Sure.
Okay, great. Can we just, can we just have a quick, um, talk about the sidewalks? Um, and how, I know we, we, you all had originally, the applicant had put in asphalt and then we requested, you know, we talked about concrete. You know, I, I did take a drive up to Walcott Woods, um, again, to look at, um, a granite curbing with, with the asphalt and it aesthetically, it really, it just, it disappears. It looks really nice. It's a very clean look and it doesn't draw your attention. My biggest concern for this project is, you know, is really having it blend in and not jump out at you when you, when you drive down the street. And I think that might be a nice way to have, um, sort of a compromise of having, you know, certainly a safe you know, ADA accessible, uh, walkway, but allow for that to be possibly asphalt. And I just wanted to see what others felt on that.
So I took a walk, um, I take a number of walks, but I took a walk today in particular to look at sidewalks. I walked where, um, asphalt is in horrible condition. I walked where asphalt was in good condition and decent condition. And I walked where concrete is, was in good condition everywhere. Um, the con, the state roadways like Reed's Dale are concrete. Um, and the towns are more commonly asphalt. Anywhere where they're making accessibility improvements at crosswalks or at, um, intersections, they're concrete. Um, the long-term durability of concrete is, uh, is just far superior than asphalt. And to maintain it as an accessible, um, way, I, I still think concrete's the best. And from an aesthetic point of view, I looked at the color today too. It's like, it seemed to me like the color of concrete on Reed's Dale matches the color of the asphalt as they've aged together. Um, when, uh, asphalt is new and the concrete in the area, the asphalt sidewalk and the asphalt uh, street are new, their coloration sort of matches up too. So they, um, I would say that, um, my preference would still be to, um, to have the concrete, but, um, that's me, one person.
Yeah. And you should walk through my neighborhood because the concrete is a mess. So, um, but now I, I, I recognize that and, and they do have to keep it, they're, they're required to keep it maintained. Whatever, whether either concrete or asphalt.
The, the site plan currently shows concrete in, in the front area and asphalt to the rear. But again, we're ambivalent based on what the board's preference is, preferences. Sorry, Maggie.
You know, I was just saying, what about a stamped concrete?
I think you could ask for pigment in the concrete if you're concerned about the color. But, um, the stamping, you have to be con, concerned about the, um, accessibility of how deep the, you know, the patterning would be. Um, and it really in terms of maintenance, if you get, um, you know, so on, snow and ice kind of gathered in those, uh, you know, it is a slope. And so if you have the snow and ice gathering in those, uh, depressions in the stamping, it could present a little bit more of a maintenance or safety concern.
I keep going back that it's still a driveway and not a road. And, you know, it should look like it fits in with the neighborhood. So if you, if your preference is concrete for maintenance, then I would want to see a pigment, um, you know, a dyed, a dyed concrete. You know, darker color so it does disappear.
I think the sidewalk across Island Street is asphalt. If that makes a difference.
Just like if you look at the sidewalk at the library, next to the library, you know, next to the stone wall, that's concrete, you know, for example.
Yeah, varies throughout town.
I mean, I gotta agree with Cheryl. I think the concrete is a much better product long term. I think it's really a Cadillac job as opposed to asphalt. And my wife and I walk also, and we do see a lot of, not that there's going to be any large trees here, but roots and asphalt is just more susceptible to frost heating, it seems, and, and, and breaks apart quicker. I mean, I, I do like the functionality and the look of the concrete. Personally, I mean, I, I could go either way on this one, but I, I would lean towards concrete if we, you know, if, if we had a choice.
Meredith, it's, um, it's not uncommon for some towns to have a, uh, a standard where the concrete material on the public sidewalks are, um, are, um, required to be a certain color. And, um, uh, you, I think, I think the concern that you've had is the, the contrast on between the lightness of the color of a concrete sidewalk and the darkness of the color of the paved roadway is, am I right?
Uh huh. Yes, exactly. But it's, it'll look much more commercial rather than residential. If you look up Walcott Woods, it just feels very, you know, um, like you're going up to, you know, our residence.
Yeah. In, in, in terms of the quality differences, as someone who's, you know, spent the years that I have in construction, it's a, it is definitely a superior surface, the concrete. I wonder if it's possible to find a balance between the aesthetic concern that you have and, and also the, the value of a, of a sidewalk that'll probably last forever. Um, if we could, um, have a, uh, you know, have a, and I'm not, I'm suggesting a, a mix-in solution to it. Um, I know in Watertown, for example, they, uh, mix in fly ash into the, into the, uh, the ready mix. they uh mix in fly ash into the, into the uh the ready mix uh concrete, and that gives them a, you know, a darker color sidewalk. Um so this, it's not unusual to to do something like that, and I'm sure you can achieve it. You know, stamping, as as we talked to uh some make sure I'll mention it earlier, it it creates another host of problems, you know, with a surface that's not smooth. And if people are walking on this, I don't think we want to create chances and opportunities for people to trip and fall. It would be hard for the applicant to maintain that, certainly in the wintertime too. But um you know, maybe concrete with a, with a um, and and you know, color that might take away some of the whiteness that might make it look a little closer to the pavement.
That would be great if that's something that's possible to do.
I I think you just, you want an opportunity to make sure that you are satisfied with the color, right? So maybe it's a matter of um have an opportunity to see a sample of what that would be. You know, before it's at at some point in time.
Ned, can you ask um the, your team if that's possible?
My assumption is that it is. Um my phone is not lighting up at the minute, so that probably means it's okay. In fact, the answer is yes, possible. So maybe
Okay.
maybe a sentence that says that the um will present for review and approval of the planning board um final uh treatment for sidewalks, including coloration.
All right, should we add that now in here?
Where, where, do you want to put that uh under the condition?
Put it as, yeah, put it as, as an, uh as a um in the condition.
All right, say that again?
The applicant shall pre- present um materials and coloration for final sidewalk treatments um for review and approval by the board. By the planning board. This is the provision in the retaining walls that deals with the changeover to the Cunegliaro Rock with Fieldstone blends round veneer. And then provision that remain foot and the, and highlighting the fact that the that the veneer would be on the portion of the wall leading from Highland Street to the traffic circle and down to the loading dock. So and then the remainder of the walls uh would be precast blocks, either Cunegliaro, ready rock, or equal without veneer. For entry of the site, we spent fair amount of detail, uh we spent some time on um earlier, uh but this deals with the notion that there will be again, the precast uh Cunegliaro block with with the veneer. Pillars to have uh solar powered lanterns on top, um and a cobblestone apron across the entry is shown on the site plan.
So the, I didn't see any dimensions on the site plan for that cobblestone apron.
They're on the landscape plan.
And the dimension was added?
Yeah. And it's referenced in the site plan.
Okay, what, what was that dimension? Does Sashi recall? Is it like eight?
It's five feet wide.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We done here with the retaining walls?
I think so, yeah. I had a question on the lighting. Um I know we talked about fourteen um feet tall, but I don't recall having.
Meredith, I'm sorry. Before we get to lighting, may I make a comment or a question on um on number twelve on the parking? Or maybe it's a different number issue now. Um it's the last sentence, visitors to the site are prohibited from parking on public ways of the town. I just wonder, is that enforceable? Or how is it enforceable?
It was really I think the concern would be you know, visitors parking on the latter streets and walking down and across the street um.
So I guess um I I'm just wondering if there's a better way to sort of ensure this rather than just making a statement like that.
I suppose we could adopt a provision that's, well, we would have to work with visitors um.
So there could be something where a um the parking I'm just thinking it's sort of a a document that could be provided to all residents and their visitors, which states what the parking arrangements are on holidays and special events. Something like that, so that they know what the policy is when coming in.
Yeah, we could, we could develop we could develop a document like that.
And in that policy document, when, when residents families um bring them here, that there'll be provided with that policy. And that policy would include this, this statement. So.
Yes, maybe the place to, maybe the thing to do is strike that sentence here and put something into the into the where we deal with traffic.
Okay.
Right. Because we do say in the, in the traffic section that we encourage visitors to follow the same rules about accessing the site, egressing the site.
Okay, that seems like a better place for it.
Okay.
And do we did, were we provided a copy of exhibit F?
I'm sorry, copy of what?
Exhibit F.
No, still being developed.
So I interrupted you, Meredith, when you were talking about the light pole height. So
That's okay.
You're trying to thought there.
All right. Um I just, I only thought we were talking about fourteen foot uh tall lights. Um I was not aware that there were any eighteen foot.
I would, I'm in agreement on that, Meredith. Um on the fourteen feet.
Yeah.
Those were the um two light poles in the rear parking lot that were, have always been eighteen feet. The lighting rep was really uh pressing to keep them that way because we were getting the coverage that was needed. The lights are going to be shut off at eleven thirty. Um and he was just concerned that we needed that eighteen feet to get the light levels that are required for safety back there. And considering that they weren't going to be visible from pretty much anyone that didn't go down that road uh in parking lots. So that's why we kept those. Everything else on site is fourteen feet. So anyone visiting and parking in the upper area will only see a fourteen foot residential scale light pole.
But the taller they are, particularly in winter, the more potential for visibility further away they are. So I think it, would it mean adding a fixture up there instead of two that you would need three?
Might need four.
Hopefully four, since they're two different um parking, you know, opposite sides of the entrance road. I mean, this is the area where we have a good fifty feet of woods um on the back and then buffer of woodland all around it.
Except that when we don't have the woods, I mean, I see Milton Hospital lighting. I see Winter Valley's parking lot lighting. Um and you see they're much more visible in the, you know, months when you don't have, you know, foliage on the trees. So um you will look straight up the street to that, or straight up the driveway here to that parking lot. It's not as if it's in the back or towards in a different part. It's the front of the parking lot uh or it it it's not fully that way. But I mean, I I don't think we should dismiss Winter Valley. It continue to you know, people think of the site as being the back, but there is a property to the back and that property is Winter Valley. Um and there um will be a parking lot there as well with fourteen foot tall um lights. The, the idea here that you were going to have this be shut off at eleven thirty, but the, I, I had suggested these dimmed down to thirty percent at dusk. So if we put here that these dimmed down to thirty percent at dusk. Um so whatever, if it's four o'clock in the winter and eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the summer, then maybe that's not such a concern to keep it at eighteen feet, but otherwise I I still am concerned.
The thirty percent capacity is in the condition?
Yeah, so but we, it doesn't say at dusk, so let's put at dusk.
We can add at dusk.
And didn't we also talk about motion detectors on these um so that they only get triggered when there is a vehicle?
One of the issues I think you might be concerned about with motion detectors is there's a lot of critters that move around back there. And uh they may be going on and off constantly.
I would actually, I would actually like all of the site lighting to be dimmed at thirty percent at eleven thirty. Uh you know, it, there shouldn't be visitors coming and going then. You're not going to have staff coming and going then. Except maybe the very front entrance, if you need it there, and security, like that can be occupancy sensor off of the building, not on the roadway. But there's no reason to light up this driveway and parking lot past eleven thirty.
We can do that.
Any parking lot, not just the rear parking lot.
Yeah, the, any of the, any of the, the, the so-called street lights can be dimmed.
And I've asked, I think, at the bollards as well, because they, uh there's a lot of them around the the perimeter. Those again, will be visible from neighboring properties in particular the winter months. So that so the lights, do we need to be more specific about the lights will be dimmed to thirty percent capacity at dusk?
But if you say the lights, including um lighting in, in uh driveway, including driveway, parking area, lighting and bollards.
You could say service area as well.
Service areas. Parking and service areas.
Pole and bollard would cover them all.
True, pole and bollard would.
So how would that work if an employee doesn't feel safe?
Well, that's where I said the ones around um the building. But at eleven thirty at night until dawn.
I'm thinking more like six or seven at night in the winter. I just want to, don't want to limit them. So I mean, it would be nice to have a provision that says something to the effect of if if an employee or if a visitor doesn't feel safe walking to their car, you know, this could be adjusted.
The one, maybe what we could do is have a occupancy sensor, sorry, Jim, uh occupancy sensor that's activated between the hours of dusk and eleven thirty. So that way it would cover that time, but not animals during the middle of the night.
What's the difference between occupancy sensor and motion?
What's, I'm sorry, motion, same thing.
Uh yeah, I guess, yeah. Okay, if you want to include motions in there.
So that word says, except as necessary to provide safe access and egress for evening visitors and shift changes. You could say um except allowing motion sensors as necessary.
That's great, thank you. I just, yeah, I'm just concerned about safety and protection and we live in a very safe town, but you never know.
There may not be as many critters because we're disturbing their habitat.
They'll be back.
Oh, and then one other thing is with it, it says uh in, in this, under conditions in A B C C shall be compliant with the principles of the International Dark Sky Association. They, I think you just say shall be certified by the International Dark Sky. So the fixtures are actually certified.
Anything here?
Not for me.
Meredith, is, is this the appropriate area to address what I've been speaking about with regard to uh possible business traffic?
That's coming in the draft, Sean.
Okay.
But this is the section, Ned, where you thought we would put the parking policy?
Perhaps if you keep going, there's some additional conditions. Right, so, so the third line in that next page says, in addition, all reasonable efforts shall be pursued to encourage visitors to comply with this requirement. Um perhaps there you could put in um language that deals with um establishing a materials to provide to visitors and families and and guests relative to um access and parking.
That makes sense.
Maybe after it says this requirement, add in before the word copies. Tim, um the applicant shall shall develop and provide um guidance materials to um guests and other visitors relative to this traffic requirement and the requirement that um in guidance relative to parking, including the provision that parking is prohibited on um the abutting, the neighbor, the abutting streets, including you know, Highland, Upper Highland and the latter streets.
Give me, give me the last part again?
Uh let me just read it. The applicant shall develop and provide guidance materials to guests and other visitors relative to traffic and parking requirements, including the prohibition against parking on Upper Highland and the latter streets. Or Highland and the Highland and the latter streets.
Do we define ladder streets?
Yes. Might wanna then make it this a new condition relative to surveillance materials and um penalty. The next um condition deals with the payment into the traffic infrastructure fund after the last hearing. I actually called Chase Berkeley to get an estimate on the cost to uh retime, resequence the signals. And he said, oh, funny you should ask. We did that a month ago. The town got a grant from Mast dot to resequence those signals and it's been done. So we took the full, what we estimated is five thousand dollars per, and we just went and said proposal, we pay, we pay the max um under the, under the policy or under the bylaw. This next condition, Sean, is the one that.
Yeah, I'm reading it.
Gets at the the issue of the hospital.
Yeah, there's a um, there's an email from from Rich uh that came around eight o'clock. If you, have you seen that in your email?
Uh, I have not, but I will take a look.
It's for a slight tweet. I think so.
Hmm, that makes sense. Could you say vendors and employees? They uh, I I think I think the the from, as I understand, the hospital's concerned, the employee issues are really, it is a difficult one. Employees now are parking at Saint Elizabeth's Church under a separate license agreement between the hospital and Saint Elizabeth's because parking is so tight on the site. Yeah, but that can't be all employees. That's just, that's not all. It's not, but I, but as we understand the real, have understood, I'm not saying it's the the only issue, but we have understood that the real issue here is the the air gas truck, the linen trucks, the ambulances um, you know, using um uh ladder streets. Yeah, they're they're the most obvious, but I'm sure there are employees. It'd be nice to try to, I mean, I'm sure there are employees going down the ladder streets. It'd be nice to get them to use the resale road exit entrance as well. Um, yeah, I, you know, I hear you.
Well, maybe that contribution of thirteen five to the traffic could be used um for the ladder streets protection. Instead of, to me, it seems like the money is going into a general fund and the impact from this development is on the neighborhood.
So Maggie, my recollection about that fund is that it those, it is specifically required to go to the neighborhood that's affected by the project.
Okay, so then if the neighbors on Stafford or Buckingham, if they wanted to put in speed humps, maybe they would get priority from DPW because they have money to 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 install them.
They might want to look at some traffic analysis of what it would, what would happen if there was any um other change um to to traffic patterns also. I mean, so for example, if there was a one-way proposed somewhere, the the traffic study could take a look at that. But it those that my recollection of that fund is that that's a requirement. So how that gets used, I believe it's planning board that and or select board that would make that decision, both, right? Okay.
I guess we we would want that opportunity, you know, to influence how the funds are used. I I think there's, there's uh, I did have a conversation with Rich Fernandez today. And um, he's, you know, the language that's written here is a result of the conversation that he then had with Ned. Uh, so he's, you know, he's um, he's committed uh to this, which uh uh I'm grateful for. But I think making sure that the monies are available because some of the success of keeping vendor traffic off the ladder streets might be to introduce signs at the end, the resale end of each of those streets. You know, to to identify uh or or uh or um, you know, um, I guess.
Perhaps um, perhaps go back up to the condition about paying into the traffic and safety infrastructure fund. They could, we could add a provision that says that with the funds to be used to address traffic issues in this neighborhood.
But you have to look at the language of that that established that fund to start with, I think, Ned. Uh, you could say to the extent um uh as allowed in that, you know, the language of that fund.
I'm just pulling that language up now to see if I can. So are we not gonna require the um applicant to adjust the lights anymore at Canton and Highland? Or is that part of this thirteen five? That's, that's gone. That's already been done. Okay, so we don't have to do that anymore? Correct. That's why I adjusted this to, you know, do a full payment. Okay, good. So one of the things it says, money paid by a specific applicant for a special permit under this section shall only be spent in mitigation measures related to said development and specified as conditions in the special permit. I think you can condition the expenditure on the provision of traffic mitigation measures um in this neighborhood or um as, you know, determined by um the select board and the planning board, perhaps in consultation with the traffic commission.
That makes sense, I think.
And maybe with the neighborhood.
I would, I would expect that they would be part of the discussion, but yeah, like you could certainly add that. I mean, that would be, this, this is outside of us. It's, it's, it's a, it's a separate action that would be undertaken by the planning board and the select board relative to what measures you want to introduce. You just know that there's a fund available to 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 pay for them.
There's a letter um provided to us late today by the neighbors. And one of the measures that they identify in the letter that they would, um, I think they're advocating for is speed bumps and they, they, they happened to say five speed bumps on Stafford. Um, so, you know, hopefully these funds, and I'm not sure how that, how that all comes to, comes to life. Um, you know, and who's involved in it. But um, I would hope that thirteen five is for potentially signage at the end of the traffic roads to identify that they're not for hospital vendors and and possibly for uh speed bumps on Stafford for traffic calming measures um.
The, the traffic commission would have to approve the number and location of the speed, speed humps, but. And I think as part of the hospital's plan, the hospital would be encouraged to post signs.
So what if we um require that this be paid in at the issuance of the building permit so that it, whatever mitigation measures are done could be done by the time of the certificate of occupancy?
I think that's fine. If you change certificate of occupancy to issuance of building permit. And I would add then, um, Tim, a next sentence that says um, funds shall be um expended um as directed by the select board and the planning board. Um, let's just find that language again. Um, on mitigation measures related to the the development and as specified by um uh both boards.
Shouldn't we reference the section of the zoning?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would just, I I would just reference the zoning itself rather than try to restate.
No, that, well, it's section two seventy-five dash twenty point. That's, it's two seventy-five dash twenty is the, is the uh traffic impact by law.
Section two seventy-five dash.
Twenty.
Twenty.
And the specific reference to the mitigation payments is uh dot six.
No, I have one question on this, uh Ned, and I, and I, I see the, the note written here, the applicant, the hospital will present the plan to the traffic commission. And the hospital will agree to be bound by any reasonable provisions that may be imposed by the traffic commission they're in and completely respect the technical ability of the traffic commission. But I really would like the planning board to understand what the plan is. You know, I I don't think the planning board has more technical ability than the traffic commission, but we're the one that's initiating this. And um, I don't know, with the way this is written, I feel like, I feel like it's um, it's gonna be, you know, if if this, if this project were to to be approved and move forward, um, how do we, how do we remain, you know? We don't want to do the traffic commission's job. I'm sure the other members feel the same way. But I I'd like to make sure that what happens here, um, you know, there's been a, if neighbors.
As about um, if you say it's imposed by the traffic commission in consultation with the planning board?
Okay, I think that's fine.
Okay.
So here, I I, are we moving now to the construction? I still have um problems with uh seven AM um conflicting with the school.
Yeah, my thought on that, Sean, was adding the provision that there would be police details? Would be specifically required and um and that would mitigate the impacts?
Well, it says to address safety concerns, so I would say it would have to be every day that there's truck delivery then.
Or as required by the, by the uh, by the director of Department of Public Works.
But he may not put the, or he or she may not put that requirement on when neighbors think it should be it it um required in terms of.
The, the issue, I think, is more about the volume of trucks coming on Canton Avenue and Up Highland Street. They're prohibited from the neighborhood? That's a separate.
Yeah, we heard, we heard concerns from neighbors about uh students walking to Pierce and to the high school down Highland, and they would have to have crossing points. Um, I actually think the intersection at Canton and and Highland and Thatcher for all these trucks is a problematic intersection anyway. And then you send all the trucks through that intersection, it's gonna be that much more challenging because that's where they all have to cross to get to the high school or to Pierce. So I still think that that, that's the worst timing I can have is in the morning at seven AM. Um, I was walking down Canton Avenue at seven fifteen this morning and it was, it was backed up, so um I still don't like the seven AM timeframe.
Well, Sean knows that's a that this is a, this is a tough one to resolve. Um, I I don't know how to resolve it other than to respond to suggestions.
I'd suggest eight AM.
Well, maybe, maybe there's an opportunity here. Uh, I, you know, I I'll go back to the police detail for a moment. Typically, the police detail is gonna, is gonna be located at the entrance to the site. And the challenge we have is that the, the traffic to and from the school is not just at the entrance to the site. So the detail isn't really gonna resolve, you know, the concern with, you know, um, the kids walking and and the traffic. But what what if we considered this? That truck traffic to the state has to be before seven or after eight, but not between seven and eight. So that would allow the builder, if he needed something for the seven o'clock hour, to have the opportunity to arrive there before seven. But between seven and eight, Cheryl, um, there's no truck traffic.
I just think it's early start for residential neighborhoods. Now you're talking about trucks rolling in at six or six thirty when we don't normally allow construction to start for seven on a site. Um, you know, what if they arrive at six forty-five? Are they gonna idle in the street on on Highland or on one of the ladder streets? I just think eight AM.
Yeah. Okay.
How about if the, if the detail is, is posted um at the uh, so I'm getting a suggestion for how about seven thirty and um detail posted.
Yeah, seven thirty won't, won't address the school timeframe. Um, you know, the I would say, what is it, seven forty-five at the high school? Um, is the, I don't remember that's exact start time, but it's definitely around then. So um I don't think that's gonna help.
I mean, I gotta say, if I lived next door to this, I would want it done as quick as possible. And if that means I have to hear noise at seven, I would, I would, personally, I would be willing to do that if it means it shaves two or three months off the duration of the project.
I don't think, I don't think it'll do that though, Jim, you know? I mean, just I, I don't think it's gonna save time. It's just gonna change the workday, you know? So that's my opinion.
We wanna ask the neighbors what they would prefer instead of us guessing?
One other thing I was thinking of is if you're gonna do a late start date, what about school vacations in the summertime when there is no school? Would you let them go back to seven o'clock those days? Long weekends, actually, they're not working Memorial Day, but yeah, so school vacations in summertime. But they have a seven o'clock start.
Certainly summertime makes sense. I think traffic's lesser anyway in the summer, particularly around the school time.
What if we said eight to two, Monday through Friday, except during summer recess? Or eight to two thirty?
Eight to three. If you're starting an hour later, you get to go an hour later.
An hour later would be four, right?
Well, this says eight to two, seven.
Where it's, yeah.
It says eight, what does it say, eight to two?
It's a six-hour workday.
Seven to two, seven to two.
We said eight to three, Monday through Friday, excluding um. We said eight to three, Monday through Friday excluding, excluding summer.
It's not the workday, Jim, though. It's just, it's certain deliveries.
Traffic, Jim, right? So the workday can go longer.
This is just, yeah, this is materials coming and going.
I mean, they can plan for deliveries and materials they need for tomorrow and the hours the day before. I mean, it's just how it's managed. Well, I'm not the manager of Sean, but it seems to me you ought to be able to do that.
You can.
One of the things that we provide below, further down, is the two-week look-ahead schedule, which includes schedule of deliveries. And the part of the notion that, you know, if there were police details, it would be a look ahead to, to DPW, alerting them to volumes and times of deliveries and when details would, would be necessary.
Well, I think the, to Maggie's point, we can get neighbor feedback, but I think the eight to two, with the exception of summer vacation, is a good.
Let's support that, Cheryl. They, they can make eight to two work.
Okay.
That's a six-hour window. That's, that's plenty of time to make it work.
And then it just, as a follow-up, if for some reason the, the trucks are coming outside of that schedule, what's the penalty?
That fine of two hundred and fifty, that's on the upper, I mean, just before this, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You might wanna add that to this, though, that language, because that, that two fifty is really for the facility once it's in operation.
Okay.
It's actually, there is a separate two fifty provision for violation of the direction of traffic rules for, for workers and trucks coming to and from the site.
Okay.
Yeah, because this is under construction management.
Yeah, that, that exists in both places.
Okay, good.
And then where it says except in the summer, you wanna have that say summer break for students or summer recess for public school?
During, except during summer school vacation.
Yeah.
And do we need to define what the hours are at that point in time? Or have we already defined that?
I think that's a good point, Sean.
When hours shall be seven to, I think seven to two is, seven to three?
And would the safety concerns just be the DPW or would it be our public safety officials such as police and fire?
I would expect that that would be coordinated by DPW, but I don't know.
Does the DPW really wanna get involved in this, though? Are we putting more work on them? You know, they usually involved in this type of thing?
For details like for the paving on Canton Ave today, whether a police detail, who's responsible for that? Is it DPW?
Yeah, the DPW has charge of the roadways.
Yeah. So I guess they have to, Maggie.
So safety concerns brought up by who, residents or? The applicant shall provide, oh, where'd it go? The applicant shall provide police details to address safety concerns. Who determines what a safety concern is? Is that a resident's complaint or is that like trucks blocking traffic? Like, when do you call in the police detail? Every day?
So maybe that there should be a pre-construction meeting where this is worked out with the DPW in advance. Sean, what have you normally seen for something like this?
I don't know. There's a lot of variety.
So this kind of reads like the DPW identifies a safety concern and then we get a police detail to address it. So I guess what a complaint would go to the DPW? Is that what Maggie?
Oh, in the real world, if there's, you know, something that's a concern, the police always get the phone call. You know, and then they respond. So, and I don't think if they were just, if there were regular, you know, material coming in, you know, I would assume you don't need a police detail every day.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm with you.
Well, it's one of the reasons why I put the provision with respect to the two-week look-aheads, that the look-aheads would include projection of truck volumes, time, timing and volumes of trucks. So that there would be some advanced notification to DPW and whoever else in the town should be, well, DPW, the, the two-week look-aheads go to the, I think go to the building commissioner, the, the DPW and to a representative of the neighborhood.
So couldn't it be here that you, there's a provision for the neighbors to be able to make this request and consult in those two-week look-aheads? So rather than just relying upon whether the DPW decides to do it or not?
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think the, I, I, dragging the DPW into this would be wrong, you know, I, somehow I think maybe between the building department and the police department, the, the issue really is, is when there's significant activities that bring a lot of traffic. So, you know, the earthwork phase, you know, large concrete placements, you know, deliveries of, of significant deliveries of framing materials, it's those things. I think that's where the traffic is gonna be most problematic.
Well, maybe it's not notice to DPW, it's notice to the building commissioner. Or both.
Or just say the applicant shall provide police details to address safety concerns that arise.
Yeah, you know, you know, what, what often happens is this falls to the builder and, you know, the, the, the builder would, might not be the best party to decide that it's safe or not safe, you know? It, it it'd probably be better to have the police, you know, I, I, you know. Uh, how do we, how do we write this? It's a
Okay, can you call Elliot Dancers?
Was there something that was written in Walcott Woods? Wasn't there? No.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't remember dealing with this issue at Walcott Woods.
Yeah, they're not this close to the schools and quite the congested sort of intersection there, so.
I, I think we should take out the Department of Public Works. It shouldn't be theirs, you know.
How about having a pre-construction or a two-week basically coordination with the building commissioner and and then that's part of the, who enforces the construction management plan? The building commissioner, right?
Right.
So I think the building commissioner, and then the neighbors get a chance to weigh in at, at, at that two-week look-ahead time, like if they're concerned that the certain level of truck activity is, is unsafe.
Cheryl, maybe, maybe ahead of that, you said something that triggered a thought. You know, there, there should be, I think maybe what we could do is establish that pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner and, and the police to determine, you know, when police details will be provided. And, and let the police in the, and at that point in time, there'll be a, there'll be a sequence of work, there'll be a works, there'll be a schedule. It'll be better understood and I think we'll make better decisions at that point and, and give the two people that would be best positioned, the commissioner and the police department, to decide how it's handled.
And, and then I, I just, I also think the neighbor should have a chance to
Sure.
provide their comment to it.
Sure. The neighbors should be a part of that, should be a part of that pre-construction meeting. But I think, I think to, to try to sort out what the police details would be right now, there's not enough information at that point in time that would be, and, and all three parties would, would, would be part of the decision-making.
So we would be striking that?
So I would say you leave it in till you get to, in accordance, you could say the applicant shall provide police details to address safety concerns in accordance with a plan to be developed at a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, building commissioner, police department, and neighbors.
And representative of the neighborhood.
Representative of the neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Repeat the composition of that?
A representative of the neighborhood. Oh, a, with the, in pre-construction meeting with the contractor, building commissioner, police department, and their representative from the neighborhood, I think.
Uh huh. Okay.
That's great.
That's great. And Nadine Hannah actually has her hand up, so she might wanna comment on these specific issues. Tim, can you let Nadine in?
Hi, Meredith. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Nadine Hannah, Levens Backford Road. I'm sure there'll be more commentary later, but going back please to the start times. The neighborhood chat is on fire right now. We appreciate the push for the eight AM start throughout the year and we ask you guys to extend that please into the summer. The summer hours, if you have school-aged children, are the only hours you get a little bit of a break in the morning to not have to get them up and out the door before the summer, you know, sport clinics and camps and so on start up. I think we don't have as much opposition to the three PM in the summer for, like extending the hours if you've given the summer, because we don't have the buses running at that time, but the school bus on Stafford and Ladder Streets during the school year is, it comes in around seven thirty, in addition to the high school starting early, the elementary school bus for Colley, Cotton, Cunningham, which a lot of our kids go to. That's a seven thirty start and it comes back right around three, so three is not a safe time in the afternoon during the school year for our kids. And eight AM sounds kind of like another punishment to the neighborhood for having to put up with a construction that we don't want to begin with. And in regards to the police detail, and this is a little less specific, but if any and all construction, even landscaping, recently what's happening on Highland, at the corner of Highland and Martin, there's police detail there. That road is narrow, it's historic, we've, that's well-established. It turns into less than a one, it's almost less than a one lane, there's no curb. The police actually have to help us when we're walking. I go for walks in with the carriage, et cetera. And I've had neighbors who I was chatting with pull me off the road, you know, they felt I was getting too close to the road, they know that there were some fatalities or, you know, that, or, or large incidents and accidents, people getting hurt on Highland due to those traffic concerns, so I would say that whatever the most stringent wording you could put in place for that is what the neighborhood would request. Maybe we'll talk again later, but I'm gonna put a kid to bed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So it sounds like the neighbors are asking for eight AM?
This issue is dealing with delivery. Right? The, the construction hours are
Scaring material.
Seven to, I'm not sure what the town's construction hours are, but they're they are what they are. I think, I think eight to two during the school year is appropriate. I, I do think that seven to three during the summer is reasonable. So leave it at that.
So I understand that construction hours in town are, are what they are, but special permits?
No, we're not gonna agree to anything other than the standard construction hours from work on site.
I think it's
But we could change.
I, I think it's I think it's a small ask from, from the neighbor who just called in to ask for the, the eight AM to carry through the summer. I think it's a small ask.
But I think for the deliveries, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry I brought it up earlier. I think eight AM is just fine.
Eight to three is, for the deliveries is fine.
Okay, so we'll change that.
Summer, Tim would go eight to three? So, eight to two, eight to two, Monday to Friday, except during the summer?
Yeah, summer is, I, I heard summer was eight to three, but even if you go eight to two in the summer, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I thought, I thought we weren't doing different summer hours.
We're doing eight to three in the summer, eight to two the rest of the year.
Right.
To just undo your corrections, just change the seven to an eight.
Great, that's.
If they want Saturdays, they can receive materials?
No, Mondays and Friday. The next condition, we're ready to move on, is taken from the order of conditions, which deals with cleaning of trucks before they leave the site.
The only thing I'd say here is what happens if the street does get all muddy? I mean, according to the way this is written, it's not going to. But if it does, we have street sweepers every once in a while on big construction sites? I don't know if that's even realistic or necessary, but I was just thinking, you know, what would be the measure if this doesn't get done and with the amount of trucking that's gonna come in and out of there, the street gets covered in just mud. Gravel mud.
We could add a provision that say that. Um, we could add a provision that say that on a periodic basis, I don't know what the right period would be that the applicant that, uh, will sweep the street, maintain its cleanliness.
Yeah. I like the sound of that.
So what, what, how do we want to do that?
Um, let's add it to, right with it, yep. Um, on a bi-weekly basis, the applicant will, um, sweep the street to assure cleanliness. That, that okay?
I, I think, I think instead of bi-weekly, I think I would just say on a consistent basis. Um, you know, because if, if that, if the tracking mechanism isn't working, we don't want to wait for the next bi-weekly interval, right?
So do we also want to be more specific about street, Highland Street, Spafford?
It's Highland Street.
Yeah.
I mean, directed to take a left.
It shouldn't be used.
Shouldn't be using Spafford.
Yeah, but, but if you're doing it bi-weekly, other vehicles can be driving down the street, picking it up and taking it down.
Uh, yeah, I, I think we want to say on a consistent basis, I, I maybe, you know, the, the, the contractor will do a much better job making sure that the, um, the tires of the trucks are free of dirt, um, if he knows he has to clean the street.
Uh huh.
That's fine, whatever, whatever the right mechanism is showing.
Yeah.
So I added this one provision that deals with resurfacing Highland Street in accordance with the requirements of the DPW.
Can we also say in, in Spafford, Spafford Road?
Uh, yes, Spafford Road.
Cause that's the
the extent that
where the tie-in is.
Where the sewer work is being done. Good catch.
I had something under this number seventeen, the condition. Um, the applicant shall provide for and fund third-party inspection of stormwater management system and earthwork installation. I was going to ask Sean, how often would you recommend that, um, inspections, those inspections be held?
Um, during.
Well, sorry, I was
Sean Riordan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Both Sean's, actually.
This language came from Sean Riordan, so I.
That's why, yeah, sorry, Sean Riordan, and then you may want to add to Sean. Is Sean Riordan still with us, Tim?
See his name.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
Away from his computer right now.
All right, Sean, um, why don't you, why don't you start first then on your recommendation on how? Cause I, it seems like we should have some sort of free, you know, frequency of, of these inspections, something structured.
Yeah, this, this, um, the stormwater management system is going to start and it's going to continue until it's complete. Uh, I, I think it should be through the, through the, you know, um, entirety of the installation of the system. It's, it's not going to be a long period of time. Um, so, uh, you know, it's really hard to, to say that you have two inspections or three inspections. An inspector is going to arrive and see that particular two or three hours worth of work and that's it. And we'll have not seen what happened the day before or what would happen the day after. It's really difficult for someone to ascertain that it's been built properly if it is just a spot inspection process.
Right. So is that a bi-weekly, you know, or how quickly will that system, um, be installed or constructed?
It, it could be, it could be, you know, a couple of weeks. Um, you know, it really, it, it would be hard for us, it'd be really hard for me to speculate, you know, how long it would be. I mean, this, uh, uh, there's some work involved in it and it, and it may not, it may not be that the stormwater, uh, management system is installed all at one time, you know, there's
Right.
there's going to be a progression through the site. Um, so I don't think it's a real financial burden. I think it's probably in the best interest of the applicant that they have an independent inspector. Um, assuring them that the contractor and the site work contractor aren't sawing the system properly, especially given all the attention this project is getting with regard to stormwater management. If I were the applicant, I'd be monitoring every day of it.
One thing I think you could say here though is if the independent inspector, um, identified that they wanted to see something done differently or wanted to be notified when something was going to be done, that they wanted to see, uh, they could be a little bit more in control. Uh, for example, three, three, three Brushhill Road, when, um, an issue arose there and we had a uh, peer review civil engineer empowered basically to go to the site on behalf of the planning board and to monitor the construction, he determined his schedule. So I think here, um, maybe we could add some language, um, at an interval, um, as recommended by the third-party inspector.
Yep, that, I like that. That's to be determined by the third party.
So where, where, where am I, where are we putting this?
All right. So go scroll back up just a little bit. So the applicant shall provide for and fund third-party inspection of stormwater management system and earthwork installation. And you could say, uh, the next sentence is at a minimum.
But not limited to?
You could say period, where it says periodic inspection as determined by the third-party inspector. Because that way it's the professional who's deciding how frequently they need to go. So.
In coordination with the developer.
Wh- 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 how do we want to phrase this again? I'm sorry.
I would say it's a, uh, product to be pretty inspection, either at the discretion of or at an interval determined by, I guess at an interval determined by the third-party inspector.
Okay. Are we good with that? That, yeah, I just wanted to have some sort of, um.
Wait, and so, and does, do they go, um, do the other reports going to DPW or the town engineer?
It says in the next sentence, Maggie, that it goes to the DPW and building commissioner.
Is the DPW the correct place or should it be the town engineer?
Town engineer works under the DPW director, so.
Should we just add that DPW town engineer and building, building commissioner? Just to be clear. Good.
Can I add town engineer to the last sentence in that next paragraph?
Yep, yep.
So this, uh, last condition just above number eighteen was, this is a new condition, Ned?
This is a new condition, um, conversation with Sean. And the premise would be that we would establish a, to address what we think are unfounded concerns, but concerns nonetheless about, um, stormwater impacts to basements within the neighborhood, among other things, that we would provide a settlement fund and a hundred thousand dollars to be divided among those who would want to take advantage of it. Absolute condition of the provision of that settlement fund would be the immediate withdrawal of the appeals to DEP and to the Superior Court. And, um, a, uh, signing of releases assuring no other, uh, appeals of this permit or any other permit. So it's, it's a settlement fund. It's not something we would have ever offered, but we're certainly open to providing it, um, and listening carefully, um, to the issues and concerns that have been raised. Have a draft of language that's not included, but would be included in the, as an exhibit H.
Ned, is that something that would need to be in this permit or is that something that could be in agreement? Because I think obviously the neighbors will need to discuss.
I don't think it needs to be in the permit. I think it needs to be, um, certainly the neighbors have to, they've got, they would have to really think about it because it would require all of them to agree that there'll be no further appeals. And that the existing appeals would be withdrawn. And there are multiple parties, there are multiple lawyers involved representing, uh, different, uh, interests here. So they would really have to, really, really have to think about it on their end as to whether or not and to what extent. We'd be willing and able to take advantage of it, but, uh, we're responding, we are responding to what we've heard and, and, um, this is the, this is what we, we can do.
So Ned, I have a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so I, I had a conversation with Ned about this and I asked him to, um, speak with the applicant to, um, uh, to assemble this, you know, and, and I recognize this is, so this is a, you know, this is a challenge. I recognize the applicant is looking for something in exchange. And, you know, we have a civil engineer who has said his design will not make conditions worse. We have our own town consultant, Sean, who has said, you know, this design and, and this improvement to the site, um, development to the site, I should say, won't make conditions worse and the DEP is going to have to also, um, you know, accept the stormwater management system. So, um, this, uh, and, and I, you know, I had said to Ned, all parties are going to have to agree, the civil engineer already does, our Sean Riordan already does, and the DEP will have to agree. And, and at this point, um, these funds are still going to be made available by the applicant, you know, uh, so that if somebody feels that their, their, uh, their property um, is potentially harmed, it's, I, I think it's, you know, a I said to Ned, it, it would be, um, you know, a strong gesture by the applicant, uh, to do this. Um, how this gets, uh, how this gets, um, you know, how it all works, I don't have an answer for it, but I wanted to have something there for the neighbors.
Yeah, as I, as I said, you know, the, 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 the applicant dug deep on this one and um, you know, this is a, this is, this is cash out of pocket. It would be available and be, be upon the issuance of the building permit. And as I said, all neighbors would have to buy into the notion of accepting this. And there's, there would be, I can understand that there'll be some angst perhaps within the neighborhood, but, um, it's a condition that we're willing to, to, uh, to live with.
My question is if in the future there is a problem, um, if they accept this and then in the future there is a direct problem, do they not have the ability to, um, you know, go?
If there's a, if there's a, if there's a direct problem in the future, they would certainly have the right to, to seek recourse associated with the specific cause of that problem.
Yeah.
It could be extremely difficult to establish that the problem came from this property. But if they can, then they certainly would have the right, um, to check, to file lawsuits to seek recovery. But they would have to prove that the problem was caused by this property, whoever that might be. And we know today.
I have, yep.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Now that, now that there has been the, the appeal, um, which has now been filed with the DEP, the, the site plan, how does that affect that process? It wants there in the midst of there.
They withdrew this, if they withdrew the appeal, we would presumably have to go back to the conservation commission for a modification to the order of conditions approving the modification to the site plan. There may be no challenge to that because that would be, that would be an issue violating the agreement not to appeal. But we would have to take the, I assume we take the latest version of the site plan and take what we filed with DEP and file it with the CONCOM and have a hearing of approving an amendment to the order of conditions.
So I feel like this isn't like under our jurisdiction. This is like a, a discussion kind of offline. This has nothing to do with the planning board and part of a, of, you know, a special permit. Um, so I don't think that this is really, I understand what was trying to be accomplished, but I just don't think, I'm uncomfortable with this. I'm uncomfortable with this in it. I don't think we should be discussing it. Um, I, I just don't think it concerns us.
I agree. I, I, I thank you, Sean, you know, for bringing this forth as a suggestion, um, just to give, um, just give the neighborhood as, as many op- options and opportunities. Um, we also, we do have, uh, Bard had his hand up. I don't know if it's still up, um.
It makes me uncomfortable because it feels like, you know, you're trying to buy off someone and I'm not.
I'm not trying to buy anybody.
No, I know, I know that.
Trying to respond to what was a reasonable request.
Feeling uncomfortable about it.
And this will, yeah, Maggie, this would not be part of the, the permit. Um, this language is here for, um, but this would be something, um, certainly between the neighborhood. Um, Bard has his hand up and so does Dan Hill. So why don't we let them, yeah, Bard, if you want to, you had your hand up first. Introduce yourself and.
Hi Bard, Harry Reza, 11 Spafford Road. Um, actually, if you don't mind, Meredith, maybe I, I ask Dan Hill to, um, chime in first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah.
Uh, good evening. Hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great. Uh, just for the record, Dan Hill, I'm attorney representing neighbors on Spafford Road. Um, a- a- and I can maybe refer my, my questions and comments into public comment, but I, I just had a question on this condition and it, it is shown as a condition and what Ned just described was uh, a condition that all of the neighbors would have to agree to, but, but who are all the neighbors? But, but who are all the neighbors? It's just, it feels very undefined. I mean, it could be like 50 or 100 neighbors. I mean, where do you draw that line? And, you know, and, and ask me for a release from neighbors to not appeal further permits. You know, we all know the devil's in the details when it comes to release documents. So I, it, this just seems like a hollow promise to me. And I, we, we appreciate some of the improvements that have been made in the plans. Definitely, you know, moving in the right direction, but, you know, this, this project still should not be approved for a lot of reasons that I described in my last letter, but I'll, I'll reserve those comments until the end. Will we have an opportunity, Madam Chair, to?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Meredith, for, for everybody that's listening, this was not initiated, this was initiated only by me. And I, and I was, and, you know, I, when I initiated this thought, I had simply said to Ned, there are 22 homes on Spafford and, you know, is it possible to consider offering each of those 22 homes on Spafford, you know, an amount of money so that in the future, if they did have to do some form of mitigation, they would have some, they would have some funds to do it. When I presented it to Ned, it was, there were no ties as I presented it to Ned. And, you know, and I had said, hey, you know, a general idea, maybe $5,000 a household. Now, at that time, I had not already, I had not already considered the other residents that we've, that we have on Highland. I was focused mostly on Spafford. So Ned has had, you know, conversations with the applicant and it has evolved to the applicant asking for something in return. You know, my intention, you know, for all the neighbors that are listening, was not for anybody to lose any of their rights or to give up their rights. It was to, you know, help with something that may come to be an issue for them. How does any of that become proven in the, in the future? I have no idea. I wasn't even suggesting that we even, you know, try to identify condition now, pre-development, identify conditions later, post, it would be too complicated. And, you know, and, and really hard to, probably hard to prove anything. So the, the thought I had was, you know, the neighbors had consistently talked about water and traffic, water and traffic, water and traffic. I feel like we've tried to do something on traffic and I was simply trying to do something with regard to water.
Great, thank you. So we are gonna, let's, let's just take this out for now. And I think this would be something that.
It sounds like for a lot of reasons, it's unwieldy and.
Yeah, and it needs to be defined and Dan is absolutely right.
I would recommend taking it out.
Okay, great. Can we delete this, Tim?
Working on it.
Oh, sorry, thanks.
So I have something to propose to add to the next two paragraphs.
Great, go, you want to go first?
Sure, after, let's see, I guess it's the third sentence that begins with the board also understands. After the word that, I'd like to suggest the words, "The board also understands that the screening of retaining walls, parking lots, and structures from adjacent properties and roadways is a significant feature of the final site plan." Period. And then the applicant, and continue on. So I'll read that again, Tim. "The screening of retaining walls, parking lots, and structures from adjacent properties and roadways is a significant feature of the final site plan." Period. Capitalized, site, final site plan. Yeah. And then, that's, and then in the next paragraph, in the sentence that begins, "In addition, the landscape architect shall be present during placement of trees." I'd like to add the words "and shrubs." And then strike the words "available to." And then at the end of that, after the word "construction," add the words "in order to maximize the screening." So this is just to ensure that the screening that we've been described, you know, by the, by Sashi, the landscape architect, will actually be fulfilled, basically. Add some more assurance here.
I agree, and I, I had mentioned that before to Ned, you know, having the opportunity to replant in places, you know, during the end of construction, towards the end, as we start to see areas that are, that are still sparse and, and need protection. This is good.
Well, where we, where we talked about that there's, there's a significant tree budget and we were interested in it going to this area. It should go to the screening. So that's, I think this is pretty explicit that that's what we're looking for it to go to.
So should we tie that into involving the planning board in that? Because we're leaving it up to, you know, the landscape architect.
We can.
And the neighbors, and maybe we even, we want to include.
A representative?
A representative from the neighborhood.
I'm not sure about the mechanics of that. You know.
In consultation?
They're planting, she's out there. She sees an opportunity to add plantings, she's gonna, they're gonna go for it.
Could we add, in consultation, in consultation?
So like, the, one of the best views to, to ensure proper screening is from the upstairs window of the neighbors. So if you look across the street to the, the house on the corner of Spafford and, and Highland, you know, they, they should be on their second floor looking over. And that's where the best placement of trees are. And usually that's what I tell my clients is stand upstairs and look out your window and that's where you place it.
But Maggie, we also have to be concerned about the neighbors to the south and to the west. So, you know, I, I'm thinking that it's all of them here. The, you know, that's not just from the Highland street side.
I know, so it can get complicated a little bit.
That, it's where, I, I do think we could say, if you'd like, the planning department or director of planning, community development and representative of the planning board. Maybe we don't need the full planning board.
Then you're calling, if you have a full, full planning board, you're calling for a public meeting. You gotta post it.
I would say the planning, the planning director.
Director and the conservation agent.
Okay.
Where, where, where do I put that?
Maybe after landscape architect, in consultation with the planning, director of planning and conservation agent? Yeah.
So I do feel like this condition, well, number 18 is, are really two separate things. One is the landscaping plan and one is a tree preservation plan. Right? And we have a tree, first we have a tree preservation plan. And so we show, the trees and growths shall be maintained with the tree protection. But then the landscaping plan is different. Right?
Landscape plan deals with what we propose to plant. Where? The tree preservation plan deals with the preservation of those trees that are capable of being protected during the construction.
So, so it's the infill also in those areas, right? It's the buffer zones that we're mostly talking about. We're not, I'm not really here making reference to the plantings that are, let's say, in the courtyard areas or in the entry circle. I'm really talking about the buffer. So if we need to make that distinction, we can do that.
I think anytime there's an opportunity to plant a tree here, that we should take advantage of it. And that, and those opportunities will present themselves in, in different areas on the site. Some of it may be within wetland setbacks, particularly within the 25 foot. That would require participation presumably of the conservation agent to make sure that the planting was appropriate.
I think the, you know, the fact that there's a lot of trees that have to be removed that are in Conservation Commission jurisdiction. And you said there's a robust or significant tree budget. And there's been an interest in that, that budget be applied to this site. I think we, as you said, we need to look at all opportunities for where it can go.
Agreed. We, we're, no, no question about that. And I think that was the purpose of this language was to provide for ongoing review and opportunity to keep planting where it's appropriate.
Even if it, in my mind, even if it's the area by the rear parking lot so that you're not looking at two parking lots next to one another. The fuller.
The whole property is really in place for that.
Right, okay.
And would any of those trees be available to be planted along Spafford as?
What we would propose is that there's going to be a significant payment into the Conservation Commission's tree fund. And that the Conservation Commission and the Shea Tree Advisory Committee should develop a plan for installation of trees off-site. And that the town should take that money and provide for the planting of those trees.
But that should only be after it's exhausted on this site, in my opinion.
I, I don't think it's going to be exhausted on this site, but I may be wrong. But be that as it may, we're, we're, we're happy to plant trees on the site and we're happy to provide, allow the fun, you know, well, funding to go to the, will go to the Conservation Commission and they'll spend in accordance with their requirements. So generally, I think in consultation with the Shea Tree Advisory Committee.
Yeah, so that was my only concern is if the spending of the funds is left up to CONCOM, do they know that there are, you know, properties on Spafford who don't have any street trees? And, you know, the town's street tree is usually like less than six feet. So I would think that if the opportunity arises for some larger trees, of, of which the, the neighborhood might have a, a certain preference to, they should be able to, you know, get that size instead of a six-foot tree. Maybe they get a 15 or 20-foot tree. I just wouldn't want the neighbors to be limited or shut off from that discussion.
I don't disagree. I don't know mechanically how to make that happen, but.
So Ned, is tree funding a predetermined set amount?
Based on the, there's a survey that has to be done of every tree that will be removed within the CONCOM's jurisdiction. So that's everything with 100 feet of the edge of wetland. That is three and a half inches or greater in caliper. And, and the, there's a calculus, I don't have it in front of me, that calculates the replacement cost. So if you have a 30-inch tree, then it's 10 times three-inch tree, whatever the value of a three-inch tree is. That's, that's the contribution that's made. So it's, it's based on the total of the caliper inches that are removed after, after the survey is done prior, after removal. And then that calculus sets the, the total amount. We get credit for every tree that gets replaced based on per caliper replacement. And then whatever is left is, is available to fund other tree replacement in the town. And our understanding is that the delta between the, the removal and the replacement is significant. All right. We've been calculated all the way out, but it's a big number. Yeah, and it'll pay for a lot of trees.
So is what you just explained documented in this?
It's in the order of conditions.
In the CONCOM order of conditions?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Um, we also have Carla Moynihan. The attorney for the Bacardis has her hand up, Tim. If we could invite Carla to come and speak with us.
I, I just allowed her to speak, she's got to unmute.
Can I speak now?
Yes, Carla, welcome.
Wonderful, so sorry. I know that we'll have an opportunity to speak later as part of public comment, but I just wanted to speak on this issue, not agreeing necessarily with any approval. But if we were so inclined to go down this road, I just want to point out for section 18 that should we not make a specific reference to the Planning Board's rules and regulations under section 54239, chairperson, on the measures to be taken to ensure survival of existing newly established trees? Not just make this a, you know, we're gonna pay X, Y, and Z amount, but rather tie it back to the standards under the International Society of Arbiculture?
Ned, how, would you be okay with tying that in?
I'm not sure what the reference is being made to.
I'm making reference to the, to Milton's own rules and regulations for the planning board, 5.4.2.
Under the subdivision regulations?
There are measures to be taken for the survival of existing or newly established trees.
Whatever those measures are onsite, we're responsible for making sure that the trees survive onsite. There's a provision for that in the order of conditions. If it's offsite and the town's gonna go plant them, the town will, will pursue the survival as the town would do that. I don't have any, any concerns about tying the survival here to trees that are planted onsite.
Okay, so I'm simply asking whether or not from my perspective, the order conditions only deals with the wetlands, Ned? Not all the clear cutting on the property?
We're not, we're not going beyond what the Conservation Commission is requiring for the dollar fund.
I'm not asking for the dollar fund, I'm asking for the, for inclusion of the rules, of the policies associated with the International Society of Arbiculture. As, as part of the planning board's own rules and regs.
I have no qualms with accepting those provisions as it relates to the survival of trees that we plant onsite. Fine.
All right, bottom line, I feel like I'm coming in late in the game here. CONCOM's jurisdiction stops at the buffer zone. The rest of the site is up to the planning board. The rest of the site is up to the Planning Board. And I'm simply pointing out that in this instance, again, I don't want the project to succeed. I don't want the project to be approved tonight. But if the board is inclined to do this, I would like to simply add in appropriate conditions.
Those, that's fine. Um, conditions that require survival of trees that we plant on the site, wherever they're planted on the site, is fine.
So we could say, Ned, how would, if we say in consultation with the Director of Planning, uh, per, and then put in this section per section five point four point two.
We can say the trees that there'll be um all trees planted shall be required to survive two plantings, two grow, whatever the appropriate length is, Maggie, two years, two planting seasons, whatever. Um, and uh, will be replaced. There's a condition in the Order of Conditions that requires replacement of trees that don't survive beyond two, after two years. Um, that's fine. That would, we replace the tree. Um, onsite, whatever, whatever the appropriate survival condition should be, we, we'll comply with. I don't know what they are, I don't know how to draft it here, so.
Yeah, so I know, like for me, if, if in, in my special permit, where I've agreed to plant trees along my buffer, I've owned that, those trees for life. So whenever a tree dies, then I have to replace it. So the same would, I would assume, be here. So if a tree gets planted that's not in CONCOM's jurisdiction, and it's part of the special permit as part of their landscape plan, then that's, that tree will have to be there forever.
There's a, there's a maintenance plan that's included in the, in the landscape plan.
I would question some of that uh due to planting uh, where, I mean, we're planting like a woodland, which uh real, in parts of the site, we're planting like a woodland. So, you know, where large trees are going to die, young trees are going to come up and fill in their places. We're really encouraging uh, an ecological system. So a one-to-one replacement whenever a tree dies in some of these areas just doesn't seem like it's going to be beneficial for the site or the plant material that's there. Um, you know, if any of the, you know, the trees within all of the, you know, typical landscaped areas, you know, AVIDA wants their site to look as good as anybody else. Uh, we're not going to, you know, they're not going to want dead trees to be standing in their center circle. You know, they, they want this site to look good, uh, and the intent is to plant these things so that they, they grow up and they survive. Uh, but in some of the areas where we're, we're planting in, uh, we're minimizing our disturbance in the woodland, we're trying to encourage this ecological system to thrive. I think, you know, we have to be a little concerned about some of the language in those areas.
Yeah, but the
Thank you, Sasha.
Yeah, but the plants that are being planted, you know, to, to minimize the effect of the wall, the nineteen-foot concrete block wall, if, if a hemlock dies in front of that, I, I do think that that needs to be replaced. I understand if, you know, a, a little bayberry or serviceberry doesn't make it. I am, you know, but, you know, an evergreen or a thick grove of plants that is being planted to specifically minimize the impact of this concrete block wall, I, I do think that that should need to be replaced.
I mean, I, I would, I, I think your language was talking about for the life of, you know, for, forever. Uh, that's something very different in this woodland. I see it, you know, we're fully expecting to uh, re- replant if something dies within the first few years, where it's a situation where, you know, there was an issue with the planted tree, but once things get established and you're really working with a uh, you know, a, an ecosystem, you're really not wanting to go in there and mess with it. Uh, AVIDA wants the walls to be screened. They're going to go in and fill in where it needs to take place. Uh, you know, that's just what they're going to do. I just would be hesitant to have language for it, you know, the, forever, if a tree dies on this property, it needs to be replaced. That, that seems that it could lead to some problems, that's all.
What if we provide a provision that requires the landscape architect to do an annual inspection for the first two years and review any um plant materials that haven't survived in the, in these buffer zones around the property and um and require the landscape architect to make a recommendation for any replacement?
Yeah, I, I think that sounds very reasonable, and that would be expected.
I think that sounds appropriate. Um, so.
So I think that would go at, in that second condition, or in that condition under number, under paragraph eighteen? Or maybe it's a separate condition?
That's what I'm wondering if it, um.
Maybe easy to call out as a separate condition.
Yeah. Okay. So I would say, Tim, the um landscape architect shall make an inspection in year one and two following the Certificate of Occupancy, issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy. And determine whether any plant materials have not survived or thrived, and make a recommendation for any replanting within the buffer zones on the east, south, and west portions of the property.
After replanting, when we?
Um.
Within the buffer zones.
Within the buffer zones on the east, south, and west portions of the property.
Would you put also something like all plantings shall be maintained in good condition? And plantings shall be replaced if diseased, dying, or otherwise not in good condition?
Could you say that again, Maggie? That was.
Um, all plantings shall be maintained in good condition. And plantings shall be replaced if diseased, dying, or otherwise not in good condition.
Isn't that what was just in there?
Yes, I went to, um, I wasn't looking at this. I was looking at another condition on another permit.
And I had wanted to add something, um, which I do think, uh, should be a separate condition. Um, that no trees shall be removed prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Are, are we doing Maggie's language?
Oh, sorry, Maggie, were you?
Mine could be repetitive. I was just looking at the language of another permit.
Yeah, I
Meredith, you can, you can add that if you want, but I guarantee that no one's going to touch this site until the building, building permit's been issued.
That, it would just, it would just be great to ensure that. If for some reason the building permit did not get issued.
If, if the building, well, put it this way, the building permit doesn't get issued, the site, something else is going to happen to the site and who knows what. But um, the trees won't be touched unless the hospital sends somebody out to do it.
Exactly. I just want to make sure that, yeah.
And I just wanted to add to the condition that I drafted there or suggested there, that um, the applicant shall implement the rec- the landscape architect's recommendations or something to that effect.
That's fine.
Well, and, sorry, and my, and when I read, um, reread this Cheryl's condition, make an inspection in year one and two. So what happens in year three if the plant material's not in good condition?
Well, is that, I go back to Sashi in terms of the timeframe that it is anticipated for these things to, or these plant materials to become established? I think that's what she said, two years, but maybe she could clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's uh, pretty typical is the two, you know, once it's gone established in two years, then it's pretty good that it's
Now, I, I will say for Ned's sake, he's right. This is for the subdivision laws.
Uh huh.
What was that?
I just, I was saying, yes, thank you.
Will you finish what you were saying, Sashi?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I was, the, the two years is uh, is pretty typical. It's what we see across the board as far as uh, long jet. Usually it's one year. Uh, ma- making sure that everything survives. That's the contractor's responsibility. Two years. Uh, I think is, is generous and right for this property. Uh, the idea that in perpetuity, we would be replacing trees that die, that's just where I have a problem with it because I feel like, you know, we are doing a lot of these plantings as an ecosystem, and that's not a way, an ecosystem does not work that way. So we're really, you know, some plant, plants will be dying and some will be regenerating. So that's the idea of the long-term maintenance of this, the woodland areas on the site, you know, everything uh, along the parking lots and uh, along the, within the uh, building areas, you know, those are all going to be, if something dies in those areas, they're going to be replaced because they're ones that are out of the woodland. They're part of this AVIDA landscape. Uh, you know, the owner is going to do those. You're, you're not going to let your, your site come into, you know, disrepair. So that's, that's my understanding of how it would, should work.
And I get that. I, I get that that's what they would do, but our um, concern is really from the passerbyer, the people driving by every day, and the people living there every day. We're trying to hide the site um, from the outside. Um, so I understand if, you know, some lavenders, you know, die in the courtyard, of course, you're going to be planting that, but that doesn't affect the neighbors. It's more like if, if the buffer planting in front of um, the walls start dying a- and, and especially the evergreens, and if only um, you know, what remains are all um, you know, scrubby woodland plantings, which I appreciate all natives, um, but they grow not very dense. They grow straggly looking, and um, they don't have any leaves on them in the winter to hide the wall, um, which, you know, is not that far away from Highland Street. So that's just my concern, is I, I do think that some plants um, need to be replaced to, that if they die in front of the wall, I think they need to be maintained.
So what if, um, you add year three to address your concerns, Maggie? Um, and I understand what Sashi's saying about long-term. And then lastly, I wanted to make a, a suggestion to that these landscape architect um uh, submit a report to the Director of Planning and Community Development, just so that uh, the town has a record of it actually having happened, that these uh, inspections actually have happened.
Yeah.
Do you want me to put that?
Okay, so I guess what I would say is the applicant shall submit the landscape architect's annual report to the Director of Planning and Community Development, and shall implement the landscape architect's recommendations.
So like in the future, if um, you know, a tree dies in front of the wall, and a neighbor calls up the building inspector to complain about the tree, you know, trees dying, the building inspector would go up and probably would enforce the replanting of the tree because it's on the landscape plan, which is part of the special permit. Isn't that the normal process of enforcement?
Well, for the forever, the, that goes back to the question of the forever, right? Like if it got planted and it survived for two years.
Um, so I'm just saying the neighbors actually, even if, you know, you know, we might not like the forever, it's, it's written in the special permit, and the special permit is forever. Um, or at least as long as the building's there and the um, the um, facility is in operation. So just, you know, for the neighbors, if you, you know, in year three, four, five, you could go and, you know, complain to the coenforcement officer, and he would go and, you know, look at it and say, yes, these trees are part of the uh, special permit and they need to be replaced. So I guess maybe my concern isn't, it doesn't need to be written because it's a given.
Uh, Tim, they need to submit that annual report to the Director of Planning and Community Development, so after the word report.
I mean, Maggie, I think your point is a good one, because a lot of this stuff is going to be planted, sort of half in, half on a dry bed and half in, in wetlands almost. So I mean, I don't know how long it takes a tree to slowly die in wetlands, but I mean, I don't know if you could, I mean, I like Cheryl's year one, two, and three idea, but um it would be nice to somehow regulate especially plantings against the wall, because that's one of my biggest concerns as you drive by. From Highland, you look and you see the wall. And the brand, the wall's a lot nicer than it was. Um, but I just don't think a lot is going to survive in that twenty feet or ten feet of, of dry area before you hit the wetlands of the wall. And so if what you just read is true, is, is that in perpetuity? I know I'm kind of going backwards here with my thought, but um if uh, you know, five years from now, is that enforceable?
I would, I would think it is. I would think it is.
Okay.
I mean, we have no problem with uh, item H, the way it's written in the special permit. No problem with that as far as, you know, landscaping, installed and maintained in a manner that will enhance and screen views. Uh, but, you know, if one tree is not there anymore and another one has grown larger in its place, then that would be the, that's the process that is developing in these woodland areas. Uh, so I have no, I don't think there's any problem with maintaining the site that, so that there's screening, but it might not be the exact plan, uh, exact vegetation that's in the plan right now because it's grown and it's developed. Fifteen years from now, some of these trees that are out there right now that are, are still there and won't be disturbed, well, they're probably not going to be there anymore. Because they're, they've reached their, their lifespan. So new trees will come up, and things will drop seeds, and new shrubs will come up with this not being disturbed for quite a long time. And, you know, we won't be going in and clearing the understory, which a lot of the neighbors seem to do. We won't be clearing that part out of our, of our woodland. We're going to leave it all natural. We're going to remove the invasives and let everything na- uh, native grow up. So there's going to be a lot more screening than anybody else in this neighborhood has.
Okay. I believe that. All right. Thanks.
And presumably Sasha, your annual inspection report will document that.
Yes, yes.
So do we bother adding year three to the first sentence of that condition? What does the board think?
No, I'm, I'm fine with one and two because I still think if the neighbors have a complaint of a tree dying in year five, it still has to get replaced.
So Ned, this provision, if the next available bed must be an affordable bed, what determines that it must be an affordable bed?
The, um, affordability plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that was specifically addressed. One of the issues, so the way the affordables will work is that there will be four affordable beds. They'll start out presumably within the two unit, the two bed units. But if one of the affordables drops away, for whatever reason, the next available bed becomes available to that affordable on the list, whether it's a single or, or a duplex room.
I know that the affordability requirements had been reviewed by the Affordable Housing Trust previously. Has this condition also been run by them?
This is taken roughly from the, the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, the, for the affordability plan.
Okay.
There is a, there is a, there is a, um, preference for Milton residents in the affordable plan.
Thanks. When do you anticipate having the, um, exhibits submitted?
Um, they're already, they exist. Um, some of them I sort of copied and pasted into exhibits. If we scroll down, some of them are just taking. So if we, once we scroll past here, you'll see what's in the exhibits.
Okay.
So the construction management plan, for example, is the Earl and Plan that was dated August 23. That would have to just be attached physically. I copied and pasted the affordability plan into the, into the exhibit dealing with affordability.
Now, I'd like to go back to number 20 for a minute.
Sure.
Thanks, Tim. So this, this condition is written to provide a preference for Milton residents. Am I right?
Yes.
And it reads the applicant shall maintain a waiting list and the next available bed should be made available to the next eligible Milton resident. Can, can we, can we reference the waiting list as a Milton resident waiting list?
The, the waiting list that they, well, they could, they, um, they could have two waiting lists. There, there is a waiting list that they will have for affordable. That makes priority, but there could be a separate waiting list for Milton residents.
So affordability aside, does a Milton resident have preference?
According to this, it does.
Okay, that's the way I read it. So you mentioned affordability, but you know.
Yeah, the, the issue of affordable trumps the issue of of, of, uh, Milton resident because there's a requirement in the zoning that there be 5% of the beds be available for affordable.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's the only trump.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can you scroll to the exhibits, Tim, please?
I, I have a question about 21.
Okay.
From the date when these permits become final, is that that's after appeals are exhausted? Is that kind of encompassed in there?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
So you can take out, right here, you can take out exhibit G. This is the same as, the same as the listing of the site, of the plans, as part of the site plan, um.
And these all have the same date.
They will have a conforming date.
I'm going to go back and I think this is the same language as is up top, which we amended relative to minor versus substantial amendment.
We can either take it out and rely on the language within the body of the permit. So what I did here was I, I copied and pasted the language from the transportation, uh, assessment dealing with the access and egress plan into the next page and I have the employee, um, and delivery person acknowledgement form as the next page. And then the, the last, last two pages are actually, um, would be, they're not here, but they would be cut. They're the delivery plan and, uh, the, the employee schedule that are separate documents. We just would attach those. The same is true of the CMP, um, that would be attached. And exhibit D, uh, the same is true. Exhibit D is the tree protection preservation plan that is submitted as, as a separate exhibit to the application. That'd be cut and pasted in. And then the affordability plan, I actually, on the next page, I think I copied and pasted what was in that exhibit. So if you go past this page, Tim, yeah, this is copied and pasted right from the affordability plan. We can take out exhibit G. It's all she wrote.
Just shoot back up to page 13, the last sentence, right? It's just a typo. It must be snow windows within site triangle. So something to do with snow storage?
It's a technical term.
Windrows?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but I.
Educate me. It's not hard to do.
Scott Thornton's not here, unfortunately.
But that's, that's, that's not a mistake.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's piling by plow.
All right.
All right. So Ned, we're, we're waiting on the policy document regarding the visiting, visitor parking. Exhibit F, is that?
No, exhibit F is the, is the, um, the parking license.
Okay.
With the hospital.
Gotcha.
It's still in progress.
All right.
Basically, the, the purpose is to show you what it is, but the, the the issue is that it's a, um, perpetual license to
Okay.
up to 30 vehicles at the hospital.
Okay.
And it was offered up by the hospital.
Yep, that's great. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board and then I'll just, um, open it up to the public, um, and the neighbors, uh, to speak?
All set for now.
I have no further comments.
Good.
I'm good.
Um, okay. All right, then let's allow, um, to see if anyone would like to speak at this time. Who's with us? Um, I have a, hand up, Dan Hill would like to speak. Let him in. Okay, welcome, Dan.
Thank you again. Um, so I'm assuming this is the last, uh, public hearing, uh, for this application and, um, we just, just wanted to essentially summarize, uh, our outstanding concerns with the project, um, and uh, make a one last pitch for the board to, uh, issue a denial of this application. We have commented on a variety of, of the project design issues over the course of the hearing. Uh, we've submitted technical, uh, comments from civil engineer and biologist, uh, Scott Horstley. Um, only marginal design changes have been offered by the applicant, uh, in our view of really fail to address the substantive concerns that we've raised relating to drainage, hydrology, access, um, the off-site traffic impacts. Um, there are ways to mitigate these adverse impacts, um, most obviously to shrink the project, which I proposed, uh, two meetings ago. Um, but it's not actually the board's place to redesign the project, right? It's, you have to, you have to vote on what's been presented in front of you. The applicant has refused to make any uh, substantive changes to the design of the project. So I had sent to you, um, on April 16th, um, some proposed findings to make, uh, uh, in support of a denial, uh, decision. And I, I just wanted to, um, briefly address the performance standards and how we view this application's, um, compliance with those performance standards under your bylaw. Um, and then specifically, you know, the main, the main performance standard here is that the planning board cannot issue a special permit uh, without making a finding that the development will serve the public good and provide significant public benefit without significant unmitigated detrimental impacts. Um, the bylaw does place a cap on the size of these projects to no more than 70 units and 78 beds, but it doesn't preclude the applicant from proposing a project with fewer units or fewer beds. Uh, likewise, the bylaw does contain maximum dimensional standards, but not, does not preclude smaller projects. Um, the bylaw requires that the project have a safe and convenient driveway system designed to meet foreseeable needs. And it mandates that the project comply with certain stormwater, uh, requirements, including the DEP stormwater standards and the Town of Milton stormwater bylaw. Under design standards, the bylaw requires the project uh, that, that, uh, the, that existing, uh, significant trees and groves of trees and other natural features be preserved. Um, that driveway layout shall take in account existing terrain and landscape features and avoid extreme or ill-designed cuts and fills. Um, the planning board may require the submission of a stormwater plan and drainage calculations, a traffic impact study. And importantly, in that point, the planning board shall determine the scope of that study and the planning board shall determine what mitigation measures may be required to address impacts. Um, the planning board may also require a fire equipment and delivery truck access plan and approve it. Mr. Horstley has testified in this proceeding that the stormwater infiltration system will cause breakout, will rise above the ground surface. That has been corroborated in part by the applicant's own analysis. Um, we've given you our analysis from a civil engineer that the project doesn't comply with the state's stormwater standards. Uh, particularly the subsurface infiltration system that is being used for rate control, which is, which is, uh, not allowed per DEP. Um, the latest plans show a large section of the first floor of the building to be submerged in groundwater. Um, that fact alone is a sign that this site is not an appropriate location for this project. With respect to the driveways and fire lanes, we provided you with, with facts and evidence that this project doesn't comply with several of the requirements, dimensional requirements in the state fire prevention code. Now, acknowledge that there's, there's some debate over the applicability of those provisions. Um, Sean Reardon provided an opinion a few weeks ago, or that, that the regulations say that these, the regs don't apply in towns that accepted the subdivision control law, which is you know, most of the towns in the state, except for the city of Boston. Uh, I, I actually called the Fire Prevention Board last week and I spoke to the general counsel and asked him directly, is the intent of that provision that these requirements don't apply in any town that has subdivision control? And, and he indicated that that probably was not the intent. The intent was if there are, if the town regulates these specific issues such as the, uh, the, 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 the maximum distance away from a fire access road to a building or the fact that you can't drive a fire truck into the opposing lane of travel. If the town has a regulation that, that, that deals with those issues, then that regulation would, would trump. Not that any town that has subdivision control, that these regulations don't apply. So we, I think everyone acknowledges this ambiguity in the regulation. Whether these apply or not, the fact is that these are standards that, that exist that the planning board can, uh, can consider. And the fact is, the project doesn't comply with them. So that is a relevant factor, whether or not the fire prevention code strictly applies or not. And then finally, with respect to off-site traffic impacts, um, the applicant's traffic study should have included a study of the roadway network for this entire neighborhood, Reed Steel Road, Highland Street and the ladder streets. And it should have developed a master plan for managing traffic flow through these intersections. In general, projects like this should be preceded by planning. The applicant did not provide such a study and has offered instead piecemeal mitigation, including simply, you know, payments in lieu. There's actually a lot of payments in lieu. It, it, it sort of feels like the developer is just buying off a permit by making payments for a tree fund and for a stormwater fund and making a settlement payment. This isn't how process should work in zoning. Um, I don't think this is a process that Milton would normally accept. Um, there should have been a traffic study. There should have been thoughtful consideration over turning restrictions on the ladder streets. Uh, not some amorphous condition or requirement that some money get paid into a fund and, and maybe that money will be spent on the neighborhood streets. But that's really out of our control and out of the planning board's control. Um, these conditions, um, they are extensive and, and some of them are well thought through, but they're not enough. The project. just simply does not pass muster, it does not meet the performance standards under the bylaw. And there could be a different project that does meet these standards. And the board should insist upon that smaller project coming before it and not just simply accept what's been put in front of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bard has his hand up and then Scott Horstley would be next. Welcome, Bard.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. This is Bard Hyde Rezai from Spafford Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the time and for all of your, you know, really thoughtful consideration throughout. And I'll, I'll start off just by kind of going back two years and, you know, remembering well the night that we, you know, we debated in town meeting about this zoning article. And, you know, when some of the concerns were raised by neighbors and people such as myself, you know, was this, this threat was raised, you know, the, well, if you don't, if you don't like this, then it's a forty B. And, you know, two weeks ago, we heard that again from the applicant, from, from BID Milton, you know, if you don't, if you vote against this, you're voting, you're voting for a forty B. Well, you know, that doesn't make this a good project. It doesn't make, you know, it doesn't excuse all of the special exemptions that they're asking for. You know, we, we know from their sweatpap analysis, just, just one violation is something would be felt every single day is that every truck turning in and out will have to cross that double yellow line and other traffic passing by will have to stop, otherwise they get into an accident. Often that traffic will go off-road and there are pedestrians there. It's a serious public safety risk to put something like this, given the wetlands restrictions that, you know, every reasonable suggestion for mitigation almost has been met with, well, we can't do that because of the wetlands. Well, because of the wetlands, we have a compromised project. We have a project plan here that is not what North Bridge has built anywhere else, as some of our research has shown. You know, all their other locations are on wide roads with wide shoulders, many of them state roads. There's much safer access, there are much fewer wetlands constraints, if, you know, most of them have none at all. You know, so we, we are, we are dealing with a unique site here and that all of the kind of going back and forth and trying to figure out ways to make it better, we just end up hitting our, hitting a brick wall because it's, it's, you know, we can't do that and it's the wetlands, the wetlands. So, you know, like you to keep that in mind, you know, we, we shouldn't just be voting on something because we think some hypothetical alternative is, is worse. And, you know, it, it really is not a sign of a good neighbor, not a current neighbor or a future neighbor to sit here and say, well, if you don't like it, this is where we're going to shove down your throat instead. So take what we're shoving down your throat right now, because it won't be as bad as this other thing. You know, that's, that's not trying to be a good neighbor. I mean, I think there have been some really thoughtful discussion over ways to mitigate construction impacts, you know, construction management plan. But I, I think for those of you who walked in the area, you know, familiar, very familiar with the area, you know, I'm, I'm still not quite sure if you understand how much of the town actually drives through these streets. You know, the, you know, closing down a lane, having police detail regularly there, you know, what will happen is, you know, there's thousands of cars that use Highland every day. And a lot of them, whenever they're, you know, we've seen this, they just start darting down the side streets because they don't want to wait two more, two minutes because there's a, there's a police detail or there's an obstruction or there are these, you know, something happening on Highland. So there, there's just a lot of impacts that, you know, it's hard to foresee. And, you know, that, that's during construction, you know, we're talking about, as you know, three hundred trees coming down, six hundred trucks of fill, dozens of trucks of, of, of this retaining wall rock blocks. You know, it goes on and on, the, 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 all the lumber, the framing, the, you know, there's going to be deliveries for months and months and months on end that will cause massive disruption to the town. And, you know, make it, it's already hard for our neighbors in East Milton, where most of the population is, to get to the high school, to get to points in the western side of town. So we're kind of creating this, you know, this bottleneck where, where we, we can't get around. So, you know, we, we've gone through some of that. I'd also like to come back to the whole public benefit versus detrimental impacts. And, you know, I would, I would respectfully, you know, submit that based on what we've learned, that the public benefit, you know, although on paper and, and, you know, you know, obviously we all support, you know, helping our elderly, particularly those afflicted with these, with these types of conditions, that on paper, the benefit to Milton residents is actually pretty limited. Because in reality, as we've learned, you know, about half or maybe a little bit more than half of, of the resident population is made up of people from the local area, which can include any number of towns. So the likelihood that Milton residents make up the majority of, of who would live here is, is actually pretty small, given some of the data. And they, they aren't giving preference to most of the rooms. Most of the rooms are not affordable per, you know, a Vito Needham room started thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars a month and go up, include other packages, transportation packages. So this is really only a select few who would have access and would benefit here. The rest of the town is, is the environment, you know, we're left dealing with, with the impacts that are largely unmitigated to this point. Well, I don't, I'm not sure if everyone heard, but, you know, those of us sitting in the back of the room last week in the hearing, we heard the CEO of North Bridge say that what they can do is give preference to residents, Milton residents who are in there who when, if and when they run out of funds. So, and I guess it hadn't even occurred to me, the length of duration and how, how commonplace it is for people who move into the, these expensive types of facilities that, you know, after a year or two, they may run out of their retirement savings or other savings. And then what happens to them, you know? So, so this is, this is a business that is, is, you know, a lucrative business model with, with high profit margins, with, with deep investor backing. You know, it's the reason why it took seven years to get approval in Marblehead before building, you know, and they have no wetlands and they're on a main state road. So, you know, they're, they have, they have time, this deadline that's been put forth is really artificial, as was admitted a couple of weeks ago. And there's still a lot of outstanding issues. So, you know, please, please give that all, all consideration. I mean, in terms of traffic, I, I, you know, one of the things in the letter that I sent that it sounds like Sean Feige you read, which I really appreciate, but obviously it was kind of last minute. But, you know, some of these kind of piecemeal suggestions, you know, on the face of it, they, they sound, you know, like they'll be beneficial, like the left turn only. You know, it does, certainly will help some of the traffic from the project avoid the ladder streets, but it doesn't deal with traffic getting to the site. You know, getting to the site, you are, you know, fed up Spafford Road from almost every direction by the GPS apps, which is, you know, something that was not discussed in their traffic report. But even, you know, let's say you're able to manage some of that by sending people, you know, left down the hill. You know, that's, that's just contributing to that bottleneck on Canton Ave between, you know, Thatcher and Highland and, and Reed's Steel Road. And that's what people are trying to avoid. So by, by sending more traffic that way, you're almost encouraging cut, more cut through traffic. So you have not just the impacts of this, of the net new traffic that you're generating, but, but, but because you're, you're contributing to a bottleneck, you're potentially making cut through worse, encouraging people to, to, to cut up and down when, when they see that, those lights backing up even more than they already do, then it just gives them more license or more encouragement to, to speed up in these narrow residential sized streets. So I think that's, that's all part and parcel of why we think a more comprehensive traffic study is, is for the whole neighborhood is, is necessary. And, you know, things, physical barriers, things like the speed humps, and, and I had included in there, which I think Sean, you referenced, the MassGov says, says it costs about two thousand dollars a, a speed hump. So now, you know, if we did five on Spafford, that would be ten thousand for Spafford. But I would imagine Buckingham and the other streets would be interested in them too. So now you're looking at, you know, and, and again, I, I think we understand it wouldn't be up to us solely, like how many on the street get, would get put in? That would, obviously we'd want expert input from those in the town who, who know these things. But, you know, you know, you might be looking at twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to do it for all the ladder streets, which, which, you know, very well may be appropriate. And, you know, we do appreciate the, you know, the, the gesture of thirteen thousand five hundred rather than the five thousand. But, but it still really doesn't get us very far, you know, so. And, and just a smaller point on the, on the signals, you know, that was one thing that was actually suggested to us that, traffic commission said, you know, we got to make Spafford the, not the fastest way to go. So let's make that light shorter, so people have to wait longer. So this stays green for much less time at, at the police station there by Highland and Canton. So, you know, people will have to wait longer there and they'll say, you know what, it's better for me to stay on Reed's Dale. And so, you know, that's why the concern was, well, if they, now they adjust it the other way, then it kind of undoes some of the, you know, some of the benefit we've actually gotten from that change. So, you know, that, that's why I think some of you have pointed out and others in the past, and the traffic commission have pointed out that that more holistic solutions are, are required. So, so yeah, take, taking all that together, you know, and what we've learned, I think the costs do outweigh the benefits to the town. I mean, just today, you know, I'm looking at my emails about making up a soccer game that was rained out for third grade boys' travel. And, you know, Milton Soccer is telling us that you need to talk to your opposing team about rescheduling games in their town because we do not have fields in Milton for these games. And we're playing baseball in Hyde Park and Quincy exclusively because we do not have fields in this town. You know, our neighborhood, you know, has turned over. Now we have hundreds of kids, you know, since the town plan was written, you know, master plan was written in twenty fifteen. You know, as much as we need to do things for our seniors, we, we need to be doing things for our kids. And right now, you know, it is, I think a lot of us would agree that there is, you know, there are other use cases, there are other, other things as well that we need in this town. And, you know, this should not all be profit driven, that benefit, you know, the out-of-town applicant and benefit the, you know, BID Milton where for them, the recurring revenue stream every time, you know, somebody falls, which, you know, I know happened to my dad a lot. We had, we had to bring him in for various scans and checkups. You know, it's, it's, it's a solid revenue, revenue stream for them. It benefits their business, no doubt. But it, you know, doesn't outweigh the cost to the town. So thank you so much for all your consideration. You know, we urge you to vote no or abstain if you don't feel like you have all the information you need and you're being forced by this artificial deadline. So thank you very much.
Meredith, you're on mute.
Sorry, next we have Scott Horstley. Scott, you should be able to speak now.
Wonderful. Can you hear me now, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Again, for the record, Scott Horstley, and I've been retained by the law firm Asher and logged in. I also have done work for Hill Law. Dan Hill spoke a little bit earlier, representing two different citizens groups. I've submitted a number of letters to both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission on stormwater, wetlands and water resources issues in general. I guess the first thing I'd want to point out here is, as I stated in my letters, general comment here, there's, there's a huge increase in impervious surfaces on a very tight site. As I think everybody would agree, this is highly constrained. They're, the applicant's working hard to make this work by bringing a lot of fill retaining walls, as well as substantial stormwater systems. The second point I would make relative to that is when you add a significant amount of impervious surface, you are going to generate an increase in stormwater volume. That's a fact, there's no way around it. There's going to be more stormwater generated in this site, significantly more. And I've, and I've articulated that in terms of numbers in my letters compared to existing conditions. So that stormwater has to go somewhere. As Chairman Kieran in the ConCom always asks, where does the stormwater go? And it's a great question. And in this case, what's happening is to comply with the mass DEP stormwater standards. The applicant has designed a number of facilities that frankly, I think will work well in controlling what we call peak surface runoff rates. That equals that, and in those cases, we're matching pre and post. However, the, as I said, because we have a lot more stormwater volume to deal with, the extra stormwater has to go somewhere. And the proposal here is to put it in the ground using infiltration systems. Again, I think the applicant's done a good job engineering facilities that will, in fact, infiltrate a huge amount of stormwater into the ground, much more than is going now. However, the consequence of that is water levels are going to rise. And there's going to be more water flowing through the site, notably into the vernal pool. And it's going to be reaching the vernal pool at different times. And the field of hydrology, we call that hydro periods. Wetlands and vernal pools are very sensitive to not only how much water is getting there, but when it's getting there. Both of those things are going to change dramatically in this project. I had suggested a while back that the applicant submit a hydrologic budget analysis for the vernal pool. That has, was declined. I don't believe you ever got that. I would strongly argue that that would be required. The third point I want to make is there seems to be some confusion here about meeting the mass DEP stormwater standards and whether that's good enough for the planning board. And I want to refer specifically to your, your zoning bylaw. And I'm looking at two seventy-five, three point two-two subsection nine entitled Utilities Stormwater Management. And what it says is the stormwater management system shall meet all applicable provisions of DEP's stormwater management guidelines and regulations. But it doesn't stop there. It also says, and the Town of Milton stormwater bylaw. Well, as it turns out, the stormwater bylaw and, and its regulations that are adopted under the stormwater bylaw are different than the mass DEP stormwater standards. I, I believe that the applicant has really been focusing on complying with the mass DEP stormwater standards. And, and they should because they're going to have to go to the ConCom. However, they also have to meet the stormwater bylaw. And I want to refer to, again, a very specific section of your bylaw and regulations that's on your town website. And, and I'll read it again. Stormwater management systems must ensure that the rate and volume of runoff discharge to wetlands and waterways approximates pre-development hydrology. What that means is they, they have to somehow equalize what's going into the wetlands and the vernal pool today versus post-development. And I would argue that they're not even close. That is not a standard with the DEP stormwater standard. So that's different, that's unique. I would suggest you need to make a finding that they've done that, that they've met, that they've done some studies to show that the volumes and rates and hydro period, as your bylaw requires, match pre and post-development. I don't know that that exists anywhere. It's in your regulations. Your zoning bylaw says that your, your boards issue the special permit must demonstrate that those regulations get met. So I think that's a really important, outstanding item. And I would just conclude with, again, as Mr. Hill mentioned earlier, I think there are some issues with some of the specific facilities. The, as I, as I mentioned, the attempt here is to put a lot of stormwater in the ground. And for the most part, I think that's being accomplished. But the end result of that means, again, water level is going to rise. They're going to rise beneath the systems, they're going to rise up against retaining walls, and they're going to rise in the wetlands. And I'm not sure that even that meets the DEP stormwater standards. But what I can say with certain is it does not meet your stormwater bylaw and regulations standard that I just met to you. Because there is going to be an increase, significant increase. And I provided you those numbers in prior letters in terms of how much of an increase. And I provide it seasonally because hydro period is important in wetlands and vernal pools. And again, that's a standard that's in your town bylaw, not specifically in the state DEP stormwater standards. And I will stop there and be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your attention.
Any questions from the board on that?
I did have a question for Sean Reardon with respect to what Mr. Horstley said. Is Sean still with us?
I am.
Sean, you've provided us with, you know, our peer review consultant opinion for all of the stormwater and traffic application materials, right? So on this, the town stormwater bylaw, can you refresh our memories on what you've provided us with an opinion about whether the application meets the town stormwater bylaw?
I, I don't recall doing that specifically because, you know, in my opinion, that they're fundamentally the same. Scott references approximating the, the volume of runoff, which, which the project does by meeting the other stormwater standards. So I, I don't, my familiarity with the stormwater bylaw lends me to believe that they're fundamentally the same.
Cheryl, I would add, sorry, that there's a specific provision in the stormwater bylaw that says that to the extent that a project is required to obtain approval from the Conservation Commission, the provisions of this bylaw do not apply. So the stormwater provisions apply to all stormwater applications that don't implicate wetland protection. When, when wetland protection comes into play, the Conservation Commission takes over and the, and the specifics of this bylaw don't apply. And that's that section. two, two, five, dash, three, A of the stormwater bylaw.
And that's pretty typical too. Cheryl, we see that quite often that there's a, in local stormwater bylaws, there's a, there's a catchall that basically is there to, to make sure that the standards get applied, even if the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Scott Horsley has his hand up. Did you want to respond to that, Scott, or is that from?
Oh, actually, I frankly, I forgot to take my hand down, but I would like to respond to that. I guess my response is that doesn't make any sense to me. Because the provision that I read you, I have to respectfully disagree with Sean. That is not in the state's similar language, but not that language. That language talks about balancing the flows and volumes to wetlands, which would include the vernal pool. And, um, the way that the state sorry, the mass D E P standards read is you have to equal or more recharge. So under the state standards, you can add more. And I've always, as you may know, Sean, on other projects, I've always raised this question. What happens if it's too much? What if it changes the hydrology of the receiving well? And in this case, the town bylaw talks about that. So if, if Ned's correct here that it doesn't count because they have to go to Concom, then you know, that's, that's quite a shame because that really, to me, defeats the purpose of the bylaw. It doesn't make any sense to me. And regardless of that, the, this site has a vernal pool. That's the downstream end of it. I, I'm not sure anybody here would suggest that's not important. And, and I would hope that, I'm not sure everybody's here familiar with the hydro period. If you read the mass D E P hydrology handbook for conservation commissions, there's a lot of discussion about it. So this impact that I'm talking about is an important one. It's well documented. And if, if the bylaw is exempt because of before the Concom, frankly, that just doesn't make any sense to me. I'll take a look at it. I'm not a lawyer, but I'll provide my regulatory opinion as opposed to my legal opinion later. Doesn't make any sense, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair, it makes perfect sense. The, the Conservation Commission is empowered specifically with, with administering the wetlands protection. So it, it, it belongs in their purview predominantly. So it makes perfect sense that you wouldn't ask another bylaw to to, to double the same process that's required under the Wetlands Protection Act. So it makes perfect sense. And the Conservation Commission is fully capable of making those determinations.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, uh, next we have Nadine Hannah. Nadine, if you'd like to join us, go ahead and speak. Oh, you just?
Hi, everyone. Meeting Hannah, eleven Stafford Road. Thank you again. Thank you for allowing that change earlier on the, um, the delivery hours. Before I go on, I just had two questions if I could ask, please. The first one is, what are, if you could remind me, what are the construction hours associated with the build? And the second one being, what are the towns allowed receiving hours for, you know, for a business functioning after post-construction?
Ned, do you want to, Ned, do you want to?
I think the general construction hours is seven to five.
And the commercial receiving hours for the town?
I don't know. We're restricting our receiving hours from between ten and two.
Thank you for that. Given that this is a special permit, Madam Chair, the neighbors are asking if you are able to restrict construction hours. And before anyone else jumps in, I am directing this question to the board alone. Is that something, and I don't want to undo, please, by the way, and of course, I agree with everything Attorney Hill said. I agree with everything Bard said. I agree with everything Scott Horsley said. We don't want the project. We don't feel it's appropriate. Outside of that, given that you are putting restrictions into something that will be voted on, are you able to restrict those construction hours significantly? And I would dare to say to the eight AM to two PM, because let's not forget when we discussed the heavy duty traffic coming in, you bring a truck in, right? They make it, they lumber through onto the site. There's the, the, the bed gets raised up. There's the clanging of the, the door when it opens. It's the dumping of anything that's on it. It's the heavy duty vehicles that are backing up, back and forth from whatever's been poured out, whether that was within the delivery time or not. The construction is going to be picking things up now if it starts at seven that have been left there the day before. And you're talking about constant, consistent, persistent noise pollution within a residential neighborhood. You know, we, we have a major renovation going on in the street, a renovation that is quite significant on Stafford Road. It needed to be done. We welcome the change to the neighborhood. Given that, we hope it'll bring, you know, great neighbors in and, and save a beautiful old home that was in jeopardy of sinking into the ground. But that, that's a home renovation and it is, and it is highly disruptive to the neighborhood. Even though we support it, it's not a complaint to get it against it. It's just reality. You're living with truck after truck after truck coming through the street, staying on the street, getting stuck in a neighbor's tree. Believe it or not, I think the video might have been included in some prior photo submissions. And then the consistency again of those vehicles on the site, on the property. So if that's something the board can do, I, I would, on behalf of the neighbors, really ask you to consider significantly restriction, restricting the construction hours on this site, given that it's not just, it's, it's not just a commercial entity, a commercial site that's being developed. It's a commercial site being developed within completely buffered by residential neighborhoods. So that's my first thing. The second one being, I do want you all to think back to the, the trucks, the tanker truck, the air gas, all of those things, no matter how much the developer, the applicant, the attorneys say that, that, that the hospital type traffic is not their type traffic, or that it won't impact Stafford Road. We know that not to be true. We know it's going to, it's going to build upon a pre-existing extreme problem that the neighbors are facing every day. We have not heard anything that, that really feels significant towards mitigating the traffic. Stafford Road should be a no truck road and a no truck road more than Highland, which is currently a no truck road, which has trucks being planned to come through to make this site develop. You know, this, this needs to be more firmly established for the residents, for the kids. It, it is not a safe situation for any of us. On the water, with a lot, with as much respect as I can muster, I don't think a generalized engineer is capable of countering a certified hydrologist who has, who has spent his career researching water and the rules and applications and has helped to write some of them at D E P. Everything that Scott Horsley said should be taken as, as seriously and with as much education and experience behind it as possible. Not taking into what he has said into, into serious, serious thought and research and, and, and time take that it needs would, would really be doing the town a disservice because we, the neighbors have paid the specialists or have contributed towards research, right? Just to make sure it's not just our opinions that we don't want it. It's that there is real factual evidence that this is detrimental. That this site, that, that the changing and, and the impervious, um, you know, space that they're going to make will actually harm the town of Milton. And again, you know, the more people in life, I have found that the more that they dismiss concerns instead of embracing and wanting to work with you, the more likely it is that they're hiding the general problem of that they know that they can't actually mitigate. And I think that this developer has shown a complete unwillingness to work with the, with the neighbors, to work with the residents. And that, as they said, they said no to so many changes because they want to put in what they want to put in, how they want to do it to the size and scope that they want to do it, forgetting any of the town rules, forgetting, you know, let's get a pass on wetlands. Let's get a pass on, on the fire safety for the entrance, you know, on and on it goes. Even to offer, what are you going to offer? Six foot tree? Take a six foot tree as a trade off for deforestation up the street, a six foot tree. If you put a tree in your home, do you go to Home Depot? Or do you go to the local nursery and get something significant, you know? That's just an opinion. I'm going to put it to the side. But I know that I don't go to Home Depot. I know that I, if I'm being serious about wanting to make an impact on my property or in my neighborhood, that I'm looking for something more significant than that. And also, the last thing being said, and the neighbors have not spoken, so I'll say this one just for myself. We don't, hush money is not a thing that I, as a person with my ethics and morals, would ever want to consider. We stood up for a reason. We have been present for a reason. Our kids have, you know, had to float in the background of these meetings and, you know, be made to have limited time with their parents, you know, night after night after night. We believe that this is not appropriate and that it does not belong here. Once again, thank you for everything you said. I urge you to vote no. I know the neighbors all agree on that at least. And have a great night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nadine. And next we have Diane DiTullio Agostino. Can unmute yourself, Diane? Oh, you're still muted. See if she can get off. Diane is still muted. Why don't we go to Carla while Diane, if she can try to get unmuted? But Carla, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted now, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you. So I think a number of the comments are already said by Nadine, Dan, Bard and Scott. And as it set forth in our letter from last week, April twenty, I'm sorry, sixteenth, Madam Chair. Basically, it comes down to the planning board still must consider the impacts on the neighbors and mitigating the negative impacts with respect to the stormwater under their bylaw. Where plainly that's not just Concom jurisdiction, which is limited to wetlands. You can't cure that when there's been no study whatsoever done with, with respect to the existing conditions. We really, really need the planning board to understand and take into consideration the fact that not only does the memory care bylaw allow, but it requires the planning board to take the broader community detrimental impact into consideration. The proponent has been so focused on mitigating the stormwater impact on the because that's what the Concom is required, what the planning board is required. As a result, stormwater mitigation must channel that water elsewhere. Therefore, it goes to where the Concom doesn't want it to go. Perfect. But it still has to go somewhere. As our own consultant for both Dan Hill and our own firm, on behalf of the neighbors respectively, has asked, where does the water go? Goes to the property of the neighbors, Bacardi, Stafford Road, et cetera. This whole argument, and I can ask Scott to speak to it, you know, specifically again, with respect to topography, surface versus ground, and the fact that Swafford here, like if you just look at the topography is different. It's, it's not all about where's downhill, where's uphill, et cetera. It's much more complicated than that. Much more complicated than I, as an attorney, could possibly, you know, articulate to the board. But you've heard, you know, the, the experts with respect to this, the hydrologists with respect to this, and I ask you to really think about that in connection with, as you similarly, there's no ability for the planning board to assess compliance or apply conditions to mitigate these circumstances without understanding and thoroughly seeing the results from these studies. I feel like this whole process has been rushed. To Nadine's point and others, there's this artificial deadline that's been set for decision. I, I really wish that we would just sit back, take a step back and ask the applicant to either, you know, reconsider the project, or at least do the studies necessary to allow the planning board to have a full deliberation with, in, in front of the public in connection with this. So at this stage, I would respectfully ask that you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. And now let's see if Diane can try to, Diane was next, but is still muted. Diane, if you can unmute yourself. She seems to be having issue. Oh. Okay, now we have Teresa O'Brien. You're unmuted. If you want to go ahead.
Okay.
And Diane next. Okay.
Teresa O'Brien, forty two Stafford Road. This is just one last plea that, you know, this is just such a large project. It's going to affect the neighborhood and everyone in town that cuts through and goes to the high school into Pierce. It's a two-year construction project, so no matter what time you have those trucks come in, it's just going to be a tough project. And then I'm listening to two to three years for the trees to grow in. So that land over there, it's going to probably be five years, listening to even the architect landscape. And in the zoning as well, you know, let's go back to trees for a second. It was twenty foot trees. I think on the recent plan, there was seven twenty foot trees listed. It would be great if the North Bridge would make this smaller, push it back a little so it's not on top of the street, so you could plant more trees and plant a better buffer for the neighborhood and again, for everyone. Because I, we keep seeing images of the driveway, but we haven't really seen many images of what it will look like from the stop sign on Highland, where everyone in town kind of drives up and they have to stop. So I think at one point, someone even asked for like a image just to see what it would look like from there. It'd be great if we could actually see that. And just to see how big this project is compared to all the houses around here, it's gonna, it's just too big. It just sticks out so much. It's fifty five thousand square feet. It's what the size of the food center and the new fire station combined in a small neighborhood. Please, again, I just urge you to vote no, and please have them make it smaller. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Teresa. And now Diane. Natasha. Let's see. I have Diane on here twice. One is unmuted. And one is not.
Hello.
All right. Yes, there you are.
The phone off. It's gonna, it's gonna cause. Yeah, I was. Uh-oh. Do not want to call the emergency number. The phone, hold on. Thank you very much. Diane DiTullio Agostino, precinct nine town meeting member, former select man, because that's what I was sworn in, has former warrant committee member, current chair of the Commission on Disability. And I am presenting to you tonight something that I have very few people know that I have a history of. And I have not brought much of this to your attention. However, I am concerned some neighbors that I only recently met had no idea what the signs referring to a sixty thousand square foot building in their neighborhood meant. And when I expressed that this had been going on for some time, this proposal through a town meeting, they were surprised. And I believe that should this go forward without some mitigation has presented by the brilliant attorneys that the neighbors have spent a lot of funding and the brilliant hydrologists, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe this could become an issue far greater than a forty B because I do not believe and I have spoken to uh developers, I do not believe this site could um support. And I think some of the planning board members, you know, have actually fought against some forty Bs in the town. But a site with this much wetlands and so limited um space, you know, financially for a forty B to successful, I find that a threat that is um blatantly obvious to scare the planning board. So what I would ask is um to keep in mind that should this and the neighborhood, you know, people think, oh, Highland Street, it's originally, but I did bring this point up before. But this property is in an environmental justice community. Winter Valley abuts this property. Winter Valley has a lot of residents who create this as an environmental justice community. And some of the items that the attorneys would be looking at, should they want, you know, I don't know if this board's considering voting tonight, but should the board vote before they have some of the samples of these new suggested bricks and new suggested um products for the neighbors to even see? Um, some of the items that would come up is that when the um article came to town meeting, the then chair of the um planning board presented to town meeting, and this is saved on tape. You know, everything these days is saved, not like in the old days, that um this residence, and I'm glad that we all understand it's not a facility, it's nothing more than a residence like an apartment complex. Um, this residence that's certified under Mass General Law Chapter nineteen D is in fact an assisted living residence. And the former chair of the planning board is on tape that they promised the neighbors, on tape at town meeting, they promised the neighbors they would not allow an assisted living residence to be built there. Um, the minutes of the planning board during that time period preceding that town meeting will state the town council. Um, either he suggested, I forget the word, I don't have the document in front of me. But um uh the Attorney Hill's comment about fire is what reminded me of all of this. Um, that they could change the word assisted living residence to memory care unit. Well, the law only certifies in the state of Massachusetts assisted living residences, and there's only two types. The two types are the traditional and the secured resident unit ones, under which would come something, the memory care unit's a very nice um marketing term. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because unfortunately, in January of twenty thirteen, I'm part of my unknown history. I unexpectedly had to get involved in what was happening in this industry in some of the places. And um I met with Representative Timothy at the time. And this also speaks to what Attorney Hill said. Representative Timothy said Massachusetts has the worst assisted living resident laws in the country. And that's when I began for the next eighteen months, and I have continued through all these years, to work to improve the assisted living residence laws to protect, to protect and make sure that the residents, the most vulnerable residents in these places, those who have dementia, those that if there was a fire, they cannot find their own way out. And the industry has a term that they use, heads in the bed. And heads in the beds is money in the developers' pockets. Um, you know, and there were plenty, I'm not saying one way or the other, a thing about North Bridge. I know something about North Bridge, but not everything. I'm not going to get into the specifics, but I do want to say that the um, one of the speakers pointed out, I think it was Bard, that the article gave a maximum number. It didn't make it that the planning board must approve that number of heads in the beds. Because these residences do not have doctors. Many people, they think they have doctors. They do not have nurses allowed to even change a Band-Aid. And this is all documented by the laws um that I could, I have volumes and volumes of information on this. Therefore, there are no CNAs. You'll often hear, oh, there's CNAs. So because you don't have doctors, you don't have nurses, and you don't have CNAs, who are the people at night who would be in there, God forbid, that there was a fire? And what is this planning board putting in the special permit that is going to safeguard to the highest degree the ability for people to get out of that, to be guided out of that building? California has the best laws. In fact, I too have spoken um to many of the, to the, I started with the Fire Chief in Milton back in two thousand fourteen, and then I went all the way up to the Fire Marshal, and they were shocked. They were shocked to learn how vulnerable, once these residences are built, that there is so little that they can do to improve fire safety in them. And the planning board's responsibility is not just to give a special permit to build a building. It's to protect those disabled residents that would be residing in this building. The number of employees, um, several years ago, there wasn't even a mandatory amount of employees. So I would know that there were sixty people with dementia in a building, and there were two young aides, not certified nurse assistants, just two, you know, college age, eighteen, nineteen year old uh individuals responsible for the safety of those sixty people. God forbid, and it really brings into focus how many exits and how much safety is a back way exit. You know, and seconds count in a fire. You all must know that I'm an insurance broker and fire safety. Uh, my husband worked for years working on the new firehouses. So it's wonderful that we have new firehouses. But what we need here is to know, and I don't even believe that there's ever been any discussion. If you put seventy seventy eight, I think those were the numbers you were saying, in heads in the beds, what does the law require for the number of people? And it's not in your jurisdiction to control the number of individuals in that building at night to be sure that those seventy seventy eight people could get out in a fire. But it is within your jurisdiction to make sure that you have explored all options. And I could actually give you, there's another town that took months and months to permit um an assisted living residence with a memory care unit. And they specifically, um, to address what Attorney Hill mentioned, included um additional fire safety. And it doesn't have to be written in the law. But it does have to be something that we as responsible residents and the planning board has responsible individuals writing the permit. Don't just take it for granted that what you're being told, well, this will work. You know, the fire truck will go on the other side of the road, it'll still make it in there. Um.
Diane, you know what? I we have a couple more people to speak. I hate to interrupt you.
I thought I might have been the last.
But no, there's
So I'll get to the point.
Toshia still has her hand up and
All right. I can't see that, but
That's okay.
Um, so the point is, you know, how many nighttime aides? Um, seconds count in a fire. And consider the fact that these neighbors have very, very good legal arguments, very, very good um DEP arguments. Uh, the Concom pretty much whitewashed this, saying that it's for the good of the town. And yet, there's no guarantee that Milton residents will be um getting beds here. I I get calls all the time, is do you know anyone at the hospice center across from St. East to help get my family member in? There is no guarantee that the money that Milton Hospital is going to get will be used to benefit anything at Milton Hospital because they are owned by Beth Israel, Deaconess Boston. So I implore you to please consider the fact that if it's a good plan and if it's a good permit, we have plenty of time to make sure it's done right, and there's no uh deadline to do this tonight. And I greatly appreciate the amount of hours you just put into this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Teresa, I don't know if you have your hand up, but I'm going to let Toshia speak uh next because she has not had a chance. We can let Toshia Wells. Yes. Toshia, okay?
Sorry, Meredith. Um, hands are going up and down, and every time I click on allow to talk, someone else moves up in the list, so.
Okay.
I am very carefully going to press the button now. Here we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, Antonina Wells, one seventy nine Highland Street. Um, I know it's late, I just want to make one comment. Um, I'd like the board to consider that installation of gauging equipment be part of the special permit so that hydro meteorological data can be recorded for accountability purposes in the near and beyond future. Mr. Horsey might have a specific recommendation as to what gauging equipment or well monitoring system would be most effective in the area. Um, but just for that to be considered. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Yep. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, next we have um Jean Irwin.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Jean Irwin, one twenty Highland Street. Um, I have several points I'd like to make quickly if I may. Um, under the rules and regulations of the planning board in regards to flooding, uh, fourteen point four, section B dash small A. Within the floodway, no new construction, substantial improvement, or other land development shall be permitted unless it is demonstrated to the building commissioner that the cumulative effect of the proposed development, when combined with all other existing and anticipated development, will not increase the water surface elevation of the base flood level at any point within the town. So I believe the applicant should have um contacted the building inspector because we know there's going to be a new development at Winter Valley. We know there's, you know, potential forty B over on um Canton Ave. We know um Marine Road is going in as we speak. And to to me, the neighbors down here have all felt the effects of the Marine Road development on our water table and our basement flooding. So again, I don't believe that the building inspector has been contacted and has done a combined um or anticipated development uh research on any surface water level in town. I I think the people down by Gulliver Road are all going to flood as all these things come in. Um, also, um, Scott Horsey, I don't think was in on the meeting several meetings ago when it was discussed that on the back of the memory clinic towards Karen Bacardi's house, there's going to be a pipe um placed ten feet below ground to help stop the flooding of the basement of the memory clinic. And my worry there was that if you lower the water table between the memory clinic clinic and Karen Bacardi's house is that the drought that will ensue will kill all the existing trees that are, you know, sixty, eighty, a hundred feet tall. In our rules and regulations, the planning board PDF under five point four, point two, point three, point nine, it says measures to be taken to ensure the survival of existing or newly established trees. I'm mostly concerned about the existing trees. When you go into Karen Bacardi's property, there are these giant beautiful trees, probably eighty feet tall. And now you're going to lower the water level, um, the groundwater level ten feet. I believe those trees are all going to die of drought. And this rule asks what measures are to be taken to ensure the survival of the existing trees. And again, it it says you need a letter of compliance issued by the International Society of Arbiculture or an equivalent guideline. And then it also says under five point four, point two, point three, describe the permanent methods to be used to control erosion and sedimentation and protection of the trees to be preserved. Again, I don't believe the applicant or the landscape architect has done either of these things. Um, so that's just on that. Also, in front of the memory clinic out on Highland Street, there's supposed to be a crosswalk. We haven't discussed the crosswalk signals. Are there going to be any? If so, what type? Is there going to be a a red and yellow light, you know, green light over them? And the effect of having a stop sign, you know, less than a hundred feet away. People come from, say, the town hall end of the street headed towards the memory clinic, and they see a green light. And they're racing to get through the green light, but they they don't realize they have a a stop sign a hundred feet beyond the green light. So I I think that's a problem. Um, also, um, in front of the memory clinic, you have a drop off zone. And they said, you know, people, the truck drivers are going to, you know, check in with the people at the front desk about making a delivery. Well, this drops up, drop off zone is directly on top of a crosswalk. Again, I don't think the ADA would like that. Also, as you go up the sidewalk towards Highland Street, they said it's about a three hundred and somewhat foot run to get to Highland Street. And again, I pointed out weeks ago that when you go into Winter Valley, who meets the code, they have sidewalks on both sides of the driveway. And the code says every two hundred feet, you have to have a a separate additional five foot square bump out. At Winter Valley, they put a little bench so the people who have less stamina can take a break and sit down for a minute or something, or at least get out of the way of the bicycle traffic. So that's another consideration. And again, I go back to the ADA rules that say you have to have equivalent facilitation regarding the parking. And Mr. Corcoran and the applicants talked about, you know, doing underground parking, which I believe would be equivalent or better facilitation, which the code requires. However, now they're talking about some sort of dirty parking spaces over at Milton Hospital. Again, this is rushed. We haven't seen any plans. There's no handicap ramps uh to accommodate people now going in that direction. There's no staircases. It's supposed to be the quickest, most unobstructed path to get there, if it was ever allowed, because again, the new code says cost is not a defense on putting the underground parking. Mr. Corcoran said it would cost four million dollars. And he said it again after he was already told that the code says cost is no defense. Um, just bear with me a couple seconds longer. Also, Concom in their haste to call a vote, which I believe the vote wasn't legal because I don't feel they had a quorum. At the beginning of the whole project, um, the neighbors, we hired Tom Palmer as um a consultant for us. And eventually, Tom got named to the Conservation Commission. And he said at the time when he joined, he said, um, I have a conflict of interest because I work for the neighbors. And he said, I will participate, but I will not vote. And when they voted for the order of conditions, there was only four members in attendance, and Tom Palmer was one of them, and he voted. And I don't believe the order of conditions is valid because I don't believe there was a valid quorum. Um, that's just another one of the problems. And then, as you look at the area over in front of the barn that exists now, the applicant wants to tear down the barn, tear down the stable, dredge where the driveway is and put another sort of retention pond there. And when we talk about all this potential neighbor flooding, no one has considered the Yellow House at ninety five Island Street, which is owned by the MRE, about their basement flooding. This new retention pond in the area where the barn is, um, the border, the house is only twenty feet over the border. And it's an old fashioned granite foundation. And those people, I believe, are unseptic. And I believe this added groundwater level down there will um wipe out their septic systems and flood their basements. And those people haven't been adequately talked about or um, no attention's been paid to them. Um, and then we go back to, you know, the threats um that the hospital has set about forty Bs. And personally, I'm not concerned about the forty Bs going across the street whatsoever. Because I've maintained all along that the applicant doesn't have the proper infrastructure to even be able to build over there. And I've already cited that the uh fire department can't really get in the in the driveway. And as I look at this this new And as I look at this new proposal tonight showing the guide rails, if you go down to the, if you can pull up, Tim, for the audience, the two schematics showing the new stone walls. The bottom one says that the new road is only ten feet on center. So now the driveway going in has gone from twenty-two feet down to twenty feet wide. And I don't believe we have a proper sweat path analysis of this new narrow street. And again, you know, the planning board's number one priority is public safety. It trumps, it should trump everything. And I don't believe public safety is achieved. Diane Agostino, I thought did a good job talking about, you know, if there was ever a fire at night and you only have a few employees to get seventy-eight heads out of bed. I thought was a good point, but it's not just fire. You know, you can have an oxygen leak, you can have a gas leak, you can have other stuff. And again, seconds matter. And there's no rendezvous point. Where do you put these people? If you take them down the back parking lot near Winter Valley, there's no escape gates. There's nothing. There's no question a fire engine or any vehicle could block the entrance and the, and then to me, all hope is lost. And I'll just finish up going back to the sewer in the street. I defy anyone because I've researched the town codes over and over. I've gone into the DPW's website. And it says that the town and the state bylaws match up perfectly. And it says a public sewer shall mean a sewer in which all owners of abutting properties have equal rights and is controlled by a government agency or a public entity. And the owners of abutting properties, Northbridge does not abut Spafford Road. I can, you know, say it till I'm blue in the face and under the town's definitions, shell is mandatory. And again, public sewer shall mean a sewer in which all owners of abutting properties have equal rights. Now this new sewer, if it goes in, I'm told it's going to be a two inch ejector system. And that's going to go from the memory clinic to the connection on Spafford Road. And that's, I'm guessing about six hundred feet away. And our bylaws are clear. It's supposed to be a gravity system. And when it's not available, when sewer is not available on Highland Street, they're supposed to have leaching fielding septic systems. Now, in addition to that, abutting properties are supposed to have equal access or equal rights to this sewer main. I abut Highland Street and my neighbors between my house and the hospital, the Berdix, we both have grandfathered double lots. And we cannot tie into this two inch sewer. These ejector systems, the law is you can't connect into someone else's ejector system. So now we have basically a private sewer in a public way. Again, it's spot zoning. You can't do it. The spot zoning says, you know, it's of a benefit, a financial benefit to just one person.
Jean, I'm so sorry. We're at eleven thirty-five right now and we just, we just need to allow the board time. So I just appreciate your coming on and speaking, but I think we we now need to move to
Yeah, and I just want to say before you make the final decision. In all these years, we've never had one meeting on this sewer system. And I'll leave it at that. And again, I think this process is being rushed arbitrarily. Thank you so much all for your time. I know it's late.
Thank you. Okay. So Nadine, you have your hand up, but I, we really do need to be able to discuss before midnight. We have to end. All right. All right, she's done. Okay. All right. So now to the board, we are at a late hour. We have a couple of options here. We can decide to continue the public hearing, but we would have to continue it probably till Monday if we wanted to meet, discuss. We can close the public hearing and then post a meeting, I guess we would. We would, we would be able to post, post a meeting for Monday if we wished. And I guess I'll open it up to the board if you want to discuss tonight and close the public hearing.
So if I just make quickly, you can only continue with the consent of the applicant.
Correct. So what would be the, the request of the board?
Well, it's really what's the request of the applicant?
I think the applicant is ready for a vote. I think the, very, very briefly, this is the town invited this development. We went through a lengthy zoning process. The project complies with zoning. We're more than mitigating the impacts that are ours. We're contributing to assisting mitigating other existing conditions. And we think we're ready for a vote. We think that the, the special permit as currently written is properly conditioned to protect the town and authorize the project to go forward. Thank you.
Cheryl, you have your hand up.
Given the hour, I'd like to request that the applicant consider a continuation to Monday. I'd like to be able to give the decision another sort of final review. We made a lot of changes tonight on the screen. And we've heard a few other comments. I'd like to just give some thought to whether we've covered the conditions as thoroughly as we possibly can. And, you know, honestly, at eleven forty, I don't think I'm in a position to look at those conditions again further tonight, but I would like an opportunity to do that. And I, I think with the applicant's patience that we could do that.
I appreciate that. I've just put out a text.
I agree with Cheryl. You know, I think we're almost five hours into a meeting and it's been fairly intense. And through the meeting and reworking language, I think it would be reckless, you know, to vote on this tonight. I agree with Cheryl. I would hope that we could move this to Monday.
I hear you. I don't disagree with you. I guess I'm stalling for a little bit of time. I think it's not
I would agree as well, if that's possible to move it. And if it would be helpful, I think we could, would the board feel comfortable voting to close the public hearing? And move to vote on Monday? Is that possible?
So the question would be whether we want to make any other language changes of the conditions? And if we need to keep the public hearing open for that?
Yeah, that's true. So, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my, that would be my concern as well if there was something that came up
Okay.
in your considerations that needed to be discussed. We'd want to have the ability to do it. We wouldn't be able to do it if the hearing were closed.
Yeah, I think, I think we need that opportunity, Ned, and to the other members. It's, it's, it's too much to try to reach conclusion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, and listen, I, as you know, I've been in front of this board and many other boards in town and I certainly appreciate the attention, the detail, the time that you've given to this process.
One other thing I'll say, Ned, is that some of these conditions we saw for the first time on the screen tonight. So I appreciate that you also have been working with your client and trying to work on these, but I think we would all benefit from, you know, a fresh set of eyes on all of these conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and that way we could look at a final draft. Clearly, clear minded.
Okay. They're watching. They're watching and they're listening, so I assume that they're taking it under serious advisement.
So Meredith, there's a, an agenda item, or several agenda items related to with the MAPC contract and then a few related to the MBTA communities. I think if we could consider the contracts in particular for Monday as well.
Yeah, I think we should be able to get that on.
And perhaps, yeah, perhaps the, the survey questions, but I mean, at a minimum, the, the two contract pieces, just so that consultants can be engaged.
And maybe we will have heard from someone else also on the RFP responses.
I'm going to mute in a moment.
Okay. Great. Tim, is there anything else that you would want to comment on or add at this point?
Nope.
No, okay. Are you anticipating any other RFP responses coming in this week?
I honestly don't think so. I'll shake the tree one more time, but we did get a note from MAPC. They just don't have the bandwidth right now. Same thing with Judy Barrett. She's having a little bit of staff turnover. She's kind of shuffling around projects.
Okay.
So.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay. The envelope says continue to Monday.
Okay.
Obviously, through final review of the, of the draft of special permit and close the hearing and call for vote. And I certainly, look at, I, I just made a very strong recommendation that the client agree with that and they've accepted that. So you know, very much appreciate particularly the last two hearings, the amount of time and effort. They're really focused on all of the details here.
Great, thank you. So
I'm exhausted and I know you are.
So if I could have a motion to continue the hearing for seven, for one eleven Highland Street to seven oh five Monday. Monday is the twenty ninth.
Some moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yep.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Okay, so we will move that public hearing. And with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So before we do that, Meredith, do we need to defer the other items on the agenda? I think it's good for the public to know that we haven't just disregarded the full agenda. Some people
No, I think we just, we did decide, yeah, we wanted to go over on the MBT, we had the review and the vote on the, the technical assistance RFP responses. We have the guiding principles, which I think we could maybe go over those. But again, I don't
Wouldn't want to set an unrealistic expectation. You know, we have met, you know, extra times for, to be accommodated. And, you know, I think we all put in a lot of time and we put a lot of effort in. And this project is a really important project that's been on our desk for a long time. And I think it deserves all the, all of our attention. And, you know, I know MBTA is extremely important. And I know, you know, on social media, people have been critical of us, which I'm not really liking too much. And, and I think it's unfair of the residents to be critical of us at this point in time. So I, I, you know, missed my climate action committee meeting. So if, there's just a lot of things going on and I just, I don't want to over commit to things. It's a lot of work. This whole, and this whole memory care, we have not received the information in a timely manner. As was stated, we just got a bunch of information today. So
All right, Maggie, I do have, I hear what you're saying. So I have a suggestion. Why don't we, because I think we will want to spend more time on the guiding principles, just going through that for the public. What I would suggest is that we, we just wrote on the amendment to the MAPC contract, which is just a very easy date change. And then we could just review, if we want, the RFP possibly and just put those two items on. We might not get to both, but at least we could get the MAPC contract.
What I would like to suggest too is we defer then the next two, the guiding principles and the survey to the May ninth meeting. And I think it's, you know, when we have agenda items that we don't get to in a meeting and we leave it open ended as to when those agenda items are going to be gotten to, you know, I, I don't think it's, you know, the public that's interested in those agenda items doesn't know what happens to them. They just sort of vanish. So I, I think when we have something on the agenda, we should defer it to a particular meeting, just so the expectations for people who may have tuned in were there. So so if, you know, with that, I would, you know, suggest that we we defer the new business of the East Milton zoning contract discussion and vote to the May, I mean, April twenty ninth meeting and also the review and vote on the technical assistance RFP responses to the May, or April twenty ninth meeting and that the other two under MBTA communities get deferred to the May ninth meeting. That would be the discussion of the guiding principles and the survey questions. And if you'd like, I'll make that a motion.
Go ahead, make that a motion.
That's the motion then.
All right, is there a second to that?
Did you say April twenty nine?
Just for the East Milton contract amendment and the technical assistance RFP response. And the other two.
Monday.
Yeah, this Monday, yeah.
That's when we just moved the public hearing to.
Okay, yep.
And that the other two be deferred to the May ninth meeting.
I confused my Mondays. Thank you.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, all in favor? Sean?
Hi.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you all.
And a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, one quick question. Jim, did you, did you say yes?
Yeah, I said yes.
Oh, okay, thanks. Oh, I thought that was part of our motion to adjourn. So separate motion.
Second.
Second.
Sorry.
Is it, Jim made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night, all.
Good night.